Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the October 15th, 2012 Truth in Taxation Hearing relative to the 2012 property tax levy. Could we have a roll call, please?
Present. Alderman Belko.
Here.
Alderman Rivera.
Here.
Alderman Cunningham.
Present.
Alderman Conken.
Present.
Alderman Moizio.
Present.
Alderman Beedling.
Here.
Alderman Newsom.
Present.
Alderman Tempest.
We have a quorum, so we'll proceed. I would like to introduce Julie Tappendorf. Julie is going to walk us through this process, so Julie, if you would like to assume the controls.
Certainly. This is the annual hearing on the city's tax levy. This is called the Truth in Taxation Hearing, which is required by state statute. It has been noticed up. It's intended to go before the City Council meeting. We do have a sign-in sheet at the back of the room, so if you do want to comment on the proposed tax levy, you should sign in. I realize that some of you may have signed in for the City Council meeting, so when I call names off, I'll ask you. If it's a comment about the tax levy, then this is the place to make that comment. If it's something else that you want to comment on, then we should defer it to the City Council meeting. So if you're not speaking on the tax levy and I call your name, just please let me know and you'll be able to speak in the regular meeting. We are going to allow everyone who wants to make a comment to speak during the hearing. We will limit comments to three minutes, and we'll be keeping track of that. Hopefully, we won't have a lot of duplicate comments, but feel free and encouraged to say ditto or "yes, I agree" to avoid having to say something that someone else has already said. Please be respectful of everyone's views. It's not a debate. It's also not a question and answer. This is an opportunity for you to provide comments to the city. So if I can get the -- actually, first, we'll turn it over just from order of presentation. First, we're going to turn it over to staff, and they're going to go through a very brief PowerPoint to discuss the tax levy, and then we'll turn it over to the public if I get the sign-in sheet. Thank you.
Good evening. Next slide, please. "Based on the 2011 tax rates, a resident with a $150,000 value home in the city of Waukegan will pay property taxes of approximately $6,300. Only 1,084 of that, or 17 percent, goes to the city of Waukegan. The remaining 38 percent is distributed to the school district, park district, county and forest preserve, township, College of Lake County, and North Shore Sanitary District. In other words, the city only receives 17 cents of every dollar paid in property taxes. The majority of property taxes, 63 cents of every dollar collected, goes to the school district. The remaining 20 cents is split between the county, forest preserve, park district, township, College of Lake County, and North Shore Sanitary District." The property tax cycle actually begins in the fall when the police and fire pension funds actuary calculates the city's required employer contribution for the subsequent fiscal year. They report on the status of their funds to the City Council. This reporting requirement took place on September 17. This is also the time when the library submits their request for property tax support. In October, the estimated aggregate levy is presented to City Council. The council approved this non-binding estimate on October 5. Since the estimated aggregate levy exceeds the prior year by more than 5 percent, a public notice was placed in the newspaper, and a truth and taxation hearing is being held this evening. The levy will be presented as an action item on the November 5 City Council agenda. Once the levy is formally adopted, it is placed on file with the county. Unlike the school district and park district, the city of Waukegan does not have a limit on our tax rate because we are home rule. However, we should be cognizant of the continued downward trend of the city's overall equalized assessed valuation, or EAV, which has steadily declined since its peak in 2008. The EAV does not determine the amount the city may levy; however, it is a factor in how the county calculates the tax rate. The 2012 EAV will not be released by the county until the spring. However, preliminary estimates from the county assessor's office point to a minimum 5 percent decline. Therefore, for purposes of the city's tax rate, staff is using this 2012 EAV of $1.2 billion. Again, this is only an estimate and may change significantly due to disputes, equalizing formulas, and other factors outside of the city's control. The aggregate levy is the portion of the property taxes which includes the library, police pension, fire pension, and funds for the general fund, also called the corporate levy. For the 2012 levy, it is recommended that the city reinstate a property tax to cover the cost of residential garbage collection, which was eliminated in 2004. This would allow the city to eliminate the $60 per household charge currently placed on residents' water bills to partially defray the cost of garbage collection. Further, it is also recommended that the city begin to levy for the employer pension contribution to the Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund, or IMRF. IMRF is the pension system which covers the city's non-sworn personnel. This will allow the city to better match its long-term obligations with a more stable revenue source. The aggregate levy is the amount which City Council will vote on in November. The aggregate levy does not include any bonded debt service, the principal and interest payments due on the city's long-term bonds. The bond levy, which is filed when the bonds are issued, is added to the aggregate levy to arrive at the total tax levy for the city of Waukegan. The total levy estimate for the 2012 tax year is $34.2 million. The breakdown is as follows: 5.6 million for the police pension, 3.8 million for the fire pension, 1 million for the Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund, 5.8 million for refuse collection, 2.7 for corporate purposes, 4 million for the Waukegan Public Library, and 11.2 million for bonds. The property tax dollars levied will remain essentially the same. However, the drop in EAV mathematically forces the tax rate up, projected to be $2.80 for the 2012 tax year. Please bear in mind that the EAV numbers are preliminary, and this rate may change once all factors are finalized in the spring. To recap, the 2012 property tax levy is made up of several parts. The corporate levy funds general governmental purposes, including the day-to-day costs of providing public safety and public works. The library's share of the city's levy accounts for 12 percent of the overall levy and defrays the costs of library services to the public. Refuge collection, which is recommended to be reinstituted to the property tax bill, will account for 17 percent of the overall levy. The quarterly fee charged to residents on their water bill will be eliminated if this is approved. 30 percent of the tax levy will be dedicated to pension obligations, and the remaining one-third is allocated to bonds. For a $150,000 value home, the estimated taxes for the city will be $1,384 for the 2012 year. After removing the refuse collection fee from the water bill, this reflects an increase of $240 for the year. The tax levy, as presented, will allow the city to maintain status quo for current city services and staffing levels, including the recent increase in police and fire positions partially funded by federal grants, barring any significant decrease in state shared revenues or a large uptake in the costs associated with personnel and related benefits. The tax levy ordinance will be presented on the November 5 City Council Agenda for Action. Thank you.
Just a reminder for those that weren't here when I first made the announcement. We will be opening it up for public comment. This is related to the tax levy, not the regular City Council meeting, so if you do have comments on other city business, you should wait until the 7 o'clock start of the regular meeting. If I call your name and it's something other than the tax levy, just let me know that you want to pass and you can go to the next meeting. The first person on the list is Violet Ricker.
Regular.
Regular, okay. Jo Schmidt. Deborah Doxy.
Pass.
Alyssa Korsel.
Cupsel.
Cupsel. Okay. Tim Knight.
Tim, are you to speak to the taxation hearing, or are you here for another one? That'll be in the regular City Council meeting.
Cynthia Sang.
Yes, sir.
Cynthia, if you could come up and give us your name and address, please. Yes, ma'am. And I'll start timing once you get done with your name and address.
Okay, very good. This is kind of part one of two, so I'll speak also at the next meeting. But my name is Cynthia Sang. I live at 32760 North River Road in Libertyville, Illinois 60048, and thank you for hearing my thoughts of the issues tonight. This is regarding a property in Waukegan. Although I live in Libertyville, I do a lot of business in Waukegan. I like Waukegan. In fact, we purchased a home. This is regarding a property at 2940 Apple Avenue, Waukegan, that we purchased in around 2005. At the time, we felt it may have been a good investment property. The older woman was going to nursing, and it sounded like a good idea. Since that time, we have improved it with painting and remodeling toward that end. The taxes on this little house with two bedrooms and one bath paid in the year 2006 were $4,560. The taxes in 2012 were $7,678. This represents a $3,117 increase in a mere six years. That is more than double what we started out at. We have no sewer. We have no city water. Schools rose from 2,757 to 4,467 for this high school, nearly double. The city of Waukegan, 3,8962 in 2006, which also represented a 220 hike from the previous year, to $702 in 2011, nearly double. Waukegan city pension rose from 184 to 433 in this time period. This is astounding in today's economic climate. When we purchased this property, I contested the taxes citing a difference in what we paid as to what Waukegan assessors assessed the property at. I was told that they could determine the assessment value even though it was $70,000 higher than what we paid, and I had the documents to prove it. This home was built in 1939. It is on what was a beautiful, quiet road in west Waukegan with only two other homes. Anyone would have liked the tranquility and large lot abutting the commed lines giving it an even more feeling of space. I am here to contest the amount of the taxes, and from what I can understand in the paper -- and I'm not that bright on this, so give me some levity there. We don't have a water bill. I don't know if it'll affect us as far as your garbage collection and so on and so forth, but I'm just here to kind of tell you that I'm very unhappy with what has happened in just such a short time with a beautiful piece of property in Waukegan. And thank you very much for listening to me.
Thank you.
Phil Kerrigan.
City Council.
Pat Morris.
Good evening. Pat Morris, 2041 Alta Vista in Waukegan on the north side, Seventh Ward. Also, for the last 36 years, I've been the township assessor in Waukegan Township, as many of you know. And we deal every May with disgruntled taxpayers, and we also deal with them this time of year, too, because the notices just went out for assessment changes. The last four or five years, or the last three or four years, the assessments have gone down, and you would think that would bring less people to our office, but it's actually bringing more. The people who are coming in our office now, 80 percent of them or more are talking about taxes and not their assessment because their assessment's gone down 15 or 20 percent a year. Most are concerned about taxes. We see people that, especially senior citizens, that are every day during this tax period time in May and in October in tears, and it's sincere, and it's getting worse. I would just like to make the council aware before you vote on this issue, which I understand tonight is going to be in November sometime, but what the ramifications are of a 21 percent increase in your levy amount. And again, as Tina mentioned, you guys are home rule, so whatever you levy, you get. You're not like the school district or the park district. You submit a levy, and then it's cut back based on ceilings in your different funds. Whatever you levy, you get from the county clerk's office. The projections were just a little bit off. You guys are proposing tonight a $34 million levy. Last year, it was a little over $28 million, thus the 21 percent increase. However, the assessed valuation is not going to go down 5 percent, as was estimated a few minutes ago. It's going to go down closer to 15 percent. School district's going to go down about 17 percent, as is the township. Park district's probably 16 percent. You guys are going to lose 14 to 15 percent in assessed valuation. So that projected rate of 2.85 is actually going to be 3.1. The rate four years ago was 1.4, the tax rate for the city of Waukegan, just zeroing in on the city of Waukegan. It's gone from 1.4 to 1.6 to 1.9 to 2.191 last year, and probably 3.1 if you pass this levy this time. That's a 42 percent increase in your tax rate. So the only reason I'm here tonight is just to make you aware of that. Certainly, it's not a -- I understand you guys have a lot of problems and issues that you have to deal with. I understand that. But it's a function of two different issues here. The assessed valuations are dropping, and they're dropping drastically. Certainly is out of control, the assessor's office is just the way the real estate market is. So when we lose 15 percent and you guys go up 22 percent, that's about a 40 percent increase in your tax rate. So I just want to make you aware of that. Thank you.
Is it Jer Gabinzki?
Jer.
Jer?
My name is Jer Gabinzki, and I live at 509 North Sheridan Road in Waukegan. I don't have a lot of facts and figures. I believe that I spoke last year similar issues, but I'm very concerned about a 21 percent, or as Assessor Morris has pointed out, something that's working out to be much more than that, foisted on taxpayers and private sector that are lucky to get a 4 percent increase, if that, and no pensions. I'd like to know, out of this amount that's being asked, how much is actually going to pensions? Because I wrote down some numbers quickly, but it seems like over half is going to combination of police, fire, and Illinois State Pension Fund. That's very significant. I'd like to know what leadership is going to happen from City Council to rein that in. It's a national issue. It's a state issue. It's a county issue, and it's a local issue. And I have not heard anything other than we'll eliminate what is a $15 quarterly on a water bill for refuse. That's a drop in the bucket compared to what you're asking taxpayers to pick up. I pay nearly $24,000 in real estate tax in this community. I have to do my own services on partly what is city property. I own two income properties and my residence. I've had to deal with less services. I'd like to know what our leadership here will be able to do and consider in reining in this cost to get it down to something that is much more reasonable, but certainly not 21 percent for a levy. Thank you.
Tony Soto.
The Council.
Okay. C. Dobbs. Just said C. C. Dobbs?
Crypts.
Is it Crypts? Okay. Jo Smith?
City Council.
Will Law?
City Council.
And Keith Turner?
City Council.
Okay.
I come to address the situation on the south side where I was raised.
I'm sorry, sir. We're right now with the truth.
Okay, then, y'all. Okay, y'all called my name. I thought it was time for me to address my issue.
That would be in the City Council.
Okay, then, well.
Yes, sir.
All right, make it clear.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that didn't sign in that would like to speak on the truth in taxation hearing issue?
My name is Chuck Lakey. Level 5531, Hilltop Lane. I was kind of waiting for other people to come up here to have them say what I probably was going to say, because I said it four years ago, and I can't see anything changing except that that time, Mayor, you're asking for a 50 percent increase, and there was three options involved with the tax levy. We have a beautiful subdivision. The roads leading to it and the roads down it are not being taken care of. We've requested all kinds of services from the city before that for over the last four years, and that hasn't happened. And yet, I still hear the same thing, said it's 65 percent. 70 percent of my taxes are going into paying for the police, fire, and the workers' pensions. I don't see any resolve to how that's being taken care of. It doesn't look like the state's going to do it, so it's all going to come back to the city, and the city's going to have to put it back on the taxpayers, and I think that's a lousy shame, because it really is detracting from what's happening on trying to expand living activities and everything else as far as Waukegan is concerned. We've had houses for sale. I've got owners, neighbors, that their houses are upside down with their mortgages. They're moving out and abandoning their homes in million-dollar homes, $500,000 homes, $250,000. It doesn't make any difference. They're abandoning them so that the tax revenues that you're trying to raise today are still going to be delayed because the bank's going to have to be the one that's going to have to pick it up. I'm pleading with you guys not to really, to really, really think about what's going on, what you're trying to make up for the last four years where you haven't had a balanced budget, what you're trying to make up and trying to cover all these pension things. 21 percent, just not going to cut it. The second, the last thing I'm going to say, and I'm sure my three minutes are almost up, Mayor. I have, I read the newspaper. As my alderman will say, I'm way out there in the west, so I don't have an access to an awful lot of communications if the Sun-Times doesn't come out there, but I did not see any notification that there's going to be a tax levy meeting tonight. You can tell me that I'm wrong. There wasn't any, you know, if it was published in the newspaper, maybe there's more than one newspaper, but I would have had 20 neighbors here tonight to sit there and talk to what was going on, but I didn't have, I didn't have the notification. So for that, it's my fault because it's my responsibility to take care of my own activities. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Before we close the hearing, is there anyone else that wants to speak on the tax levy matter?
Good evening. I am Pilarita O'Dad. I live in 23 Pioneer Road, Waukegan. I had lived in Waukegan for the last 25 years. The first time we were in that area, the road was just paved, and maybe there were too many people using the road, but at this point, right in front of my front door, the Pioneer Road is already crumbled. Mayor Sabundian, I would like to introduce myself because I sent you two letters. The first one, I asked for the Pioneer Road to be paved because it was not yet really destroyed, but now it is already big. And then the second letter, I issued the same thing, that our Pioneer Road may be taken care of, because some of the streets around this county is already taken care of. You, 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 and I, all of us pay our taxes, so I hope my little share of taxes will be taken care of the Pioneer Road. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else? Okay.
Sitting none. We move on to the hearing. Thank you for attending. Thank you for your questions. We don't do a back-and-forth tonight, so follow-up, give us some phone calls, follow-up with us, and we'll provide answers to you as best we can. Thanks, everybody. That will conclude the hearing for this evening. We will break for about five minutes and then go into the regular City Council meeting. Thank you. Okay, thank you very much. Could we have the roll call, please?
Alderman May.
Present.
Alderman Belko.
Present.
Alderman Rivera.
Present.
Alderman Cunningham.
Present.
Alderman Conken.
Present.
Alderman Moizio.
Present.
Alderman Beedling.
Present.
Alderman Newsom.
Present.
Alderman Moizio.
We have a quorum.
Alderman Tempest.
Alderman Tempest is present. Okay, we have a quorum. Could we please all rise for the moment of silence? Thank you. My pledge to the United States of America and to the Republic of America, my nation, my God, individual, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Well, first, I want to thank all of the participants and volunteers who helped make last weekend's Zombie Walk a terrific success. Despite the rain, we had a good crowd on hand, and everyone really did seem to be enjoying themselves. Despite the somewhat gruesome theme, the event is a real hit with families. Thanks to the Ribbon Academy students for their performance to the song "Thriller," and to all the volunteer makeup artists who applied the scary effects to many of the youngsters at the event. I want to mention the opening of the new ice cream shop on Genesee Street, the Original Ice Cream Parlor, and the owners, Jason George and Will Monk, for all of their hard work in getting the shop looking good and having such a great turnout for their ribbon cutting. Also, a week ago last Saturday, we cut the ribbon at the new barber shop right across the street. The owners, J.R. Santana and Brandon Correa, have done a fantastic job on the exterior and interior of the shop. I highly recommend you visit those two, as well as the This and That Shop and others along Genesee Street. Now that our main drag in downtown has been repaved, it is really starting to look sharp and really is starting to feel like a downtown again. All of this is happening thanks to the hard work and camaraderie of the merchants and volunteers who are so crucial to the revitalization taking place there. Last Thursday, Main Street and the Greater Waukegan Development Corporation hosted a tour of available properties in our downtown and along the lakefront. I want to thank Main Street and all of the other participants for helping with this effort to create a wider awareness of the growing number of opportunities in Waukegan. I was lucky enough to join in the first tour, which was hosted by our own Lisa May, who did a great job giving historical and investment information on properties that included the OMC site, vacant properties along Genesee, the Bombardier site, and others to a vanload of bankers and developers. This sort of partnership, which I hope will soon include the Waukegan Chamber of Commerce, the Latino Chamber of Commerce, the Black Chamber of Commerce, and the Lake County Partners in the future, are the sort of that we will need more of in order to bring all available resources to the issue of moving this community forward as the economy begins to grow again. Last Friday, I attended the anti-recidivism luncheon hosted by Waukegan Township Supervisor Patricia Jones. It was a packed house with numerous judges and elected officials, including Alderman Edith Newsom, Alderman Sam Cunningham, and County Board Member Mary Ross Cunningham. The event was highlighted by speakers who have benefited from regional efforts to work with individuals recently released from incarceration and who are struggling to return themselves back into the fabric of society as contributing citizens. The event really highlighted just how difficult it is for individuals to erase the mistakes of their past in order to move forward towards a future that allows them to earn a living, raise a family, and make good on the transgressions in their pasts. We have been holding meetings in order to try to save the Lake County YMCA facilities in both Waukegan and Vernon Hills. Right now, the focus is on moving along, is moving along two separate tracks. One is to raise the income needed to enable the Y to continue their day-to-day operations at both locations, and the other is to assist in a long-term solution to their debt.[1564.83] Thank you. My pleasure, ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Well, first I want to thank all of the participants and volunteers who helped make last weekend's Zombie Walk a terrific success. Despite the rain, we had a good crowd on hand and everyone really did seem to be enjoying themselves. Despite the somewhat gruesome theme, the event is a real hit with families. Thanks to the Ribbon Academy students for their performance to the song Thriller and to all the volunteer makeup artists who applied the scary effects to many of the youngsters at the event. I want to mention the opening of the new ice cream shop on Genesee Street, the Original Ice Cream Parlor, and the owners, Jason George and Will Monk, for all of their hard work in getting the shop looking good and having such a great turnout for their ribbon cutting. Also, a week ago last Saturday, we cut the ribbon at the new barber shop right across the street. The owners, J.R. Santana and Brandon Correa, have done a fantastic job on the exterior and interior of the shop. I highly recommend you visit those two as well as the This and That Shop and others along Genesee Street. Now that our main drag downtown, in downtown, has been repaved, it is really starting to look sharp and really is starting to feel like a downtown again. All of this is happening thanks to the hard work and camaraderie of the merchants and volunteers who are so crucial to revival, to the revitalization taking place there. Last Thursday, Main Street and the Greater Waukegan Development Corporation hosted a tour of available properties in our downtown and along the lakefront. I want to thank Main Street and all of the other participants for helping with this effort to create a wider awareness of the growing number of opportunities in Waukegan. I was lucky enough to join in the first tour, which was hosted by our own Lisa May, who did a great job giving historical and investment information on properties that included the OMC site, vacant properties along Genesee, the Bombardier site, and others to a vanload of bankers and developers. This sort of partnership, which I hope will soon include the Waukegan Chamber of Commerce, the Latino Chamber of Commerce, the Black Chamber of Commerce, and the Lake County Partners in the future, are the sort of, are the sort of that we will need more of in order to bring all available resources to the issue of moving this community forward as the economy begins to grow again. Last Friday, I attended the anti-recidivism luncheon hosted by Waukegan Township Supervisor Patricia Jones. It was a packed house with numerous judges and elected officials, including Alderman Edith Newsome, Alderman Sam Cunningham, and County Board Member Mary Ross Cunningham. The event was highlighted by speakers who have benefited from regional efforts to work with individuals recently released from incarceration and who are struggling to return themselves back into the fabric of society as contributing citizens. The event really highlighted just how difficult it is for individuals to erase the mistakes of their past in order to move forward towards a future that allows them to earn a living, raise a family, and make good on the transgressions in their pasts. We have been holding meetings in order to try to save the Lake County YMCA facilities in both Waukegan and Vernon Hills. Right now, the focus is on moving along, is moving along two separate tracks. One is to raise the income needed to enable the Y to continue their day-to-day operations at both locations, and the other is to assist in a long-term solution to their debt. Our bound council will be working with members of the YMCA Board of Directors to explore financial solutions to their current debt situation, and hopefully, both of these tracks will come together with a successful plan that will ensure the viability of this important asset to both Waukegan and Vernon Hills. If anyone is interested in assisting or making donations to this effort, please contact my office and we will steer them in the right direction. We need to raise nearly a million dollars in a very short period of time, so I am calling on all of our corporate citizens to please be of whatever level of assistance you can to this most worthy cause. My thanks go out to the members of our local FOP Lodge for inviting me to their retirement dinner last Friday. Officers Colleen Thomas and Louis Rodriguez were honored for their years of service, but since we have had several officers retire in the last year, we will be inviting them to our next City Council meeting where we will honor their years of duty to our community with a plaque of some sort to go. So I'm thinking that this will be a great way to recognize them. I want to note that we have lost one of our most community-oriented corporate citizens and lifelong resident, Fred Abdullah. I want to send the city's most heartfelt condolences to everyone affected by his passing. He was a very old friend of our family and will be missed greatly by the thousands of people he helped over the years since he founded both AirCon and the Bank of Waukegan, now known as North State's Bank. And lastly, I would like to recognize with the help of our Public Relations Director, David Motley, the October Volunteer of the Month. David, if you could please come up. And we are acknowledging a group known as WAGS, and they have been very active in working with the animal rescue and health situation here in Waukegan, so we are, like I said, regarding them as, oh, I'm sorry, it's September, I apologize. Yes, September Volunteer of the Month, so that it is hereby presented to them at the City Council Meeting on this date. And Dave, am I supposed to read anything else from this? If WAGS would please come up to the front?
First, I wanted to thank the mayor for the great honor. We appreciate it, and we really appreciate the opportunity to have worked with the city of Waukegan for WAGS. Again, it's Waukegan Animals Getting Saved. Just kind of give a little bit of background about our group. We started about a year ago to support the fine officers of Waukegan Animal Control, Susan Elliott being one of those. We were so impressed with the amazing work they were doing, wanted to help them out, so we are, excuse me, an auxiliary to Waukegan Animal Control. So we raise money and donations. We've, and I just made a quick list of some things we've done in the one year that we've been an organization. We raise money for food and medical care is our primary thing. So far, we've helped over 75 animals get emergency medical care. We did a Christmas coranda drive, coranda bed drive, where we had over 44 raised dog and cat beds donated to the shelter so that none of the animals have to sleep on the concrete in the middle of winter. We also took, take part of, in a Purina Pets for People program where we've raised over 20,000 pounds of cat food and, sorry, cat food, dog food, and cat litter for the Waukegan Animal Control animals and for local residents. We also, Alex here is one of our volunteers who has made connections with over 60 rescues to ensure that as many of our animals can get pulled out of the shelter as possible and safely into rescue. And last but not least, about a year ago, we took part in a huge spay neuter day where we had over 101, from 5:00 AM until about 1:00 AM in the morning, we had over 140 animals spayed and neutered in that single day, low cost to the residents of Waukegan. So this group's done an awful lot in a year's time, and it's been an honor to work with them and an honor to work in Waukegan, so thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Everybody will be limited to three minutes. I just would like to set a couple of ground rules here before we get started. Number one, this is not an opportunity for attacking individuals, slandering, libeling, interjecting political comments in any fashion whatsoever. Those will not be tolerated. We would prefer that you remain, you keep your voice at a conversational level, that we not point or wave our arms or gesticulate in any fashion that would be considered inflammatory, and that you please adhere to the three-minute limitation, which will be held equally to everybody that comes up to speak. So our first speaker tonight is Violet Ricker.
My name is Violet Ricker and I live at 203 Water Street in Waukegan. I'm also the Director of Waukegan Main Street, which is our downtown development nonprofit organization. I just want to give a quick update of some exciting things going on in downtown and invite you to some really great events that we have coming up this weekend. I'd like to begin by echoing the mayor's comments about all the excitement we've had recently. Zombie Walk was a great success, and we'd like to extend a thank you to those volunteers who worked really hard to put that on. And the two new businesses, if you have a chance to stop by 32 North Genesee for the ice cream shop or 25 North Genesee to Quaffir Barber Lounge, we'd certainly recommend that you check those out. It's been really exciting to watch the neighborhood where I live and where I've grown up come alive again, and so I'd like to also extend a huge thank you and appreciation to the City Public Works Department and Tom Haggerty because downtown Waukegan looks amazing. Genesee Street has been repaved and really looks great. All of his staff was wonderful to the business owners down there, and we really appreciate their commitment. So coming up this week, we have another one of our monthly art walks every third Saturday. This one will be the 20th, and this art walk is from 5:00 PM to 10:00 PM. I'd encourage you to check out Art Walk, W A U K dot com for more information, and this is the first art walk that will feature tours of the soon-to-open Carter Art Space Lofts. There's information about that at ArtSpaceWaukegan.org. We also have Clockwise Theater's new independent, our new independent theater in downtown with their first musical beginning this Friday. That musical is Soul Sisters. And information about that and many other upcoming events can be found at our website, WaukeganMainStreet.org. Lastly, I'd just like to invite anybody who has any ideas for what we could be doing downtown to talk to me afterwards or to give us a call at our office at 847-623-6650 as we're working on our work plans for 2013. We'd love to hear what you guys have in mind. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Violet. Next, we have Mr. Joe Schmidt, and if everybody would please, when they come to the microphone, introduce themselves, give their address. Once they finish with giving their address, I will start the timer.
Hi, Joe Schmidt, 446 North Sheridan Road, Waukegan, Illinois. Good evening, Your Honor, ladies and gentlemen of the City Council, and good citizens of Waukegan. I come before you tonight to address the accusations presented in an email by Margaret Carrasco, news release by Margaret Carrasco. Ms. Carrasco reports, "Local residents are outraged over what appears to be political connections leading priority over safety of children in Waukegan." First of all, no such threat exists. We do have a member under contract working at the thrift store who is a registered sex offender. This gentleman's crime was over six years ago, was nonviolent, involved an older teen. Our member has served his sentence, completed his counseling, has not re-offended, has no complaints lodged against him at this time, and has lived with his pastor's 65-year-old mother for over the past year. He has, he is and has been in full compliance with all registry requirements, which can be attested by Chief Greathouse. I'd like to address some of Ms. Carrasco's questions and statements. She asked why Fist is allowed to import parolees from all over the state. We do not do that. As explained by Lake County Supervising Agent John Ruston of IDOC, Fist is an approved site for parole people to parole to. IDOC does not refer people to Fist, nor do they provide Fist any funding. We receive letters from inmates or from their families asking for assistance and requesting to become members of the organization. Ms. Carrasco asked why there's no oversight. There's plenty of oversight. Weekly, counselors from Treatment and Alternatives for a Safer Community, TASC, set up shop at the Fist office and counsel clients and our members dealing with their issues. Plenty of parole agents from IDOC frequent the building on a day, almost daily basis. Ms. Carrasco asked, "Is this business zoned with special use permit as required by federal law?" I offer you deter to Mr. John Fallon's response in the Waukegan Newsome. There is no such standard. She further asked why no child predator alerts are being utilized. Most people are aware that they can go online and view all registered sex offenders and their crimes who live in the city. Fist has no sex offenders living at its property. Again, there are no sex offenders living at the Fist property. We are well aware of and comply with regulatory requirements and do not send any of our members who are RSO in the situations that violate these laws, nor do we place the community in any harms way. We recognize our twofold responsibility. First, to protect the community; secondly, to protect our members. We have been assisting our members, the residents of Waukegan and the 9th District for 42 months. We have been in the building at 680 South Genesee for 22 months with no complaints. Fist is a great organization.
Thank you, Mr. Schmidt. You have three minutes. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next, we have Deborah Doxy.
Deborah Doxy, 1613 North Avenue, Waukegan. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Council, addressing Fist and the issue of community safety. Several months ago, when Fist residents and members and staff observed an increase in the drug trafficking in the parking lot between Fist, the Fist Building and the neighbor, the Combe, they notified the Waukegan Police Department and requested increased patrol in the area to deter those activities. Sergeant Kelly responded quickly and had a lookout car patrol the area within 24 hours, effectively stopping those illegal activities. Fist members have spent thousands of hours volunteering at churches, schools, and working with many organizations to beautify our city. This includes painting buildings, repairing structures, cleaning ravines, and doing security for events, building garden plots, watering the planters, et cetera. Fist volunteers have worked alongside many of the aldermen here during these properties, during these projects. They have never had any complaints lodged against them for any activities. In addition, Fist does not import parolees. An example of how one would come to Fist, one female who is currently living, give me a moment. One female who is currently living in the residence called for, called from prison and requested to be paroled into Fist. She has a long history of infractions and incarceration, but Joe became convinced that Fist, along with her strong family ties, that he would assist her in her parole. During so, through the summer, she has helped Fist by cooking at the concession stands for the summer Saturdays events, when also with the Waukegan band concerts. She is a licensed food safety manager, and she earned that certification while incarcerated. After living with the Fist house for about four months, she is now reunited with her husband and is seeking an apartment for her and her husband. Fist has given her references for various landlords in the areas. She has, to help her assist with that move, once again showing that any and everyone, given the opportunity, can be productive members of society. This woman is hardly an import as she is a lifelong resident of Waukegan of the First Ward. In fact, when she was younger, she babysat First Ward Ald, our First Ward Alderman, and she attends church with that alderman's mother. I ask you, does this sound like an organization that promotes unsafe conditions for the residents of the city of Waukegan? There are approximately 800 registered sex offenders living within the city of Waukegan. As stated by Commissioner Cunningham at a Lake County Board meeting addressing this issue, they have to live somewhere. Ms. Carrasco stated that local residents expects, expressed outrage. Nobody other than Mrs. Carrasco has expressed such concern.
Thank you, Ms. Doxy. Three minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have, and I'm going to try with the last name, and I apologize if, Alyssa Cursel?
Cutsel.
Cutsel, I'm sorry. I apologize.
That's all right. Alyssa Cepsal, 1032 West Broadway, Winter Harbor, Illinois. Actually, I was born and raised in Waukegan, and even though I've family transplanted a little ways up north, my heart's always going to be a Waukegan girl. I am, would like to, yeah, thank, as far as the mayor and the council, on behalf, being able to speak on behalf of Fist. I am currently the Executive Director with Fist. I have previously had several years' experience through the Waukegan Township, working with ex-offenders and helping them to become employed and make that transition from incarceration to coming back into the community. I can't, excuse me, concerned, you know, with Fist, we have served over 1,500 individuals. With our Transportation Wides Home Program, I can attest that the majority of members who received transportation from the Lake County Jail to out, were going to communities that were outside of Waukegan and the Lake County area, thereby actually increasing the safety issues here in Waukegan by removing a potential hazard of someone with a criminal issue, who has had criminal issues, finding themselves suddenly homeless with nowhere to go, with that temptation of committing another crime just to make some money. For the last few years that I've been involved with Fist, I have yet to have, you know, come across an issue where, say, I was concerned for my children's safety or my own safety. They, in fact, Fist, I've actually seen where, if there was an issue, like with, we had the drug trafficking, that was near the building, we call the police. We want to work directly hand-in-hand with the police. I mean, that's the best way for our members to become good citizens. They need to, you know, they've learned accountability, now they're making the transition to being full-fledged community members again. Thank you very much.
Next, we have Mr. Tim Knight.
Good evening. My name is Tim Knight, and I'm the pastor at Community Christian, I live at 225 Regentland Avenue, gotta do it right there. Thank you for letting me to talk tonight. Thank, live at 225 Regentland Avenue, and I've been the pastor at Community Christian Church since we planted it back on April 9th of 2000. A few years ago, we had the opportunity to be the first location for Fist to start meeting, and we wholeheartedly, as a church, supported an organization that is wholeheartedly wanting to help people get, help those incarcerated get out of prison, find jobs, find homes, and be contributing members of society. We feel like the call, the vision, the mission of our church is to touch the heart of this community by showing God's love in a very practical way. We feed over 1,000 people a month out of our food pantry, and we have been a homeless shelter for 10 of the 12 years the church has been in existence, and we have a closed closet, and we also, we also have Fist that we support and love, and I consider Joe Schmidt a brother in Christ, and I know that what he's doing is because Jesus is alive in his heart, got a hold of him in prison and said, "You need to be doing this." When a person answers a call like this, his heart's pure, his heart's holy, his heart wants to do what's right, and I'm thankful for that, very thankful for that. I also have taught at Waukegan High School personally. I also direct the alternative school system for Zion Benton Township High School for kids who are at risk. Hopefully, we have lots of kids that aren't going to be part of our penal system here, but we will have kids that'll turn out and be But we will have kids that'll turn out and be helpful like Joe has been and is and will be. It's a privilege and an honor to be associated with FIST. And they have had meetings at our church. We have never once, we have never once had any of our kids or adults or anyone in danger from any members from FIST. By the way, our church does have a policy where they have to go, undergo heavy scrutiny to be working with our kids at the church, too. So I thank you for your time. I thank you for what you're doing for this community, and I just want to continue partnering with you in that. So, how you doing, Larry?
Thank you.
Thank you.
God bless. Thank you very much. Next would be Mr. Phil Kerrigan.
Phil Kerrigan. I live at 1944 Ash Street, Waukegan. I am, let me explain a little bit before I explain the FIST tie. I've been fairly involved in prison stuff. I am a board member of the John Howard Association, a hundred-and-five-year-old prison reform group focused on visiting state facilities that incarcerate men and women and juveniles. I'm also a fifteen-year member of Prison Visitation and Support, a group that's been around since the middle sixties that really is a supportive, social and friendly supportive group for individuals incarcerated in federal and military prisons. I'm appointed at the Metropolitan Corrections Center in Chicago. And I, through the NAACP in Lake County, I have had the liberal visiting privileges of anybody I would like to see at Lake County Jail. So I understand the prison and jail part, and everybody, most everybody gets out. And getting out is the challenge. I learned about Joe Schmidt. I didn't know Joe until he came to Lake County. He was in one of two IDOC facilities that really deal with one of the fundamentals of why people get locked up, substance abuse. Sheridan Correctional Center, closer to here, has a very strong program. And Southwestern Correctional Center at the bottom of the state, or nearly at the bottom of the state, or whatever was where Joe was. He identified himself when I first met him. I knew this as an ex-offender and wanted to start this FIST program. I'm a board member of FIST. I attend most every board meeting I can. One of the difficulties when you get released from prison, the Illinois Department of Corrections, the United States Bureau of Prisons, Wisconsin correctional system, they don't tell you where to go, except there has to be an acceptable place. You pick who wants to have you, family, strangers, or whatever. Is, what are you going to do? We have a bill in the Illinois Legislature, Ban the Box. That's the box that says, "Have you ever been convicted of a felony? Identify it." And people who have hiring power file those in their own file, because they don't want anything to do with it. They don't care who you are, just the fact that you're an ex-offender. FIST has started a program that allows people to be contributors to the community and to earn either housing and/or some spending money. This is a very significant program. It keeps people from reoffending, because if you can't live and you can't eat, you're going to end up going back to what you did before. That may take three to six to nine months, but it happens. That's why we have people who return within that period of time to where they-
Mr. Kerrigan, thank you. Your time is up, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Kerrigan.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Next, we have Mr. Joe Smith. And please, Mr. Smith, give your full name and address for us, please, sir.
I'm Joe Smith. I stayed at 838 Monmouth King for over forty-five years. And my biggest complaint is how leadership have failed us to let this building, FIST, come in our neighborhood. You know, and I'm a reverend, and I have a ministry, street ministry that I do. And I pulled up to the building where they be at. They come asking me, "Do you got any weed? Do you got any of this?" And I said, "Man, listen, I got some Jesus for you." You know, and we got to petify, and we got to watch out for our kids. We don't know when nobody going to break bad. A person can break bad at any moment. We don't have people around here that break bad and kill up folks. And we thought that they was all right. So what my problem is, how leadership let this guy come in and set this building up in my neighborhood? And y'all patting him on the back like he doing a good job. Yeah, he doing a good job, because the garbage is in our neighborhood. I hear you say how good downtown doing, but y'all sending the garbage down here. It was downtown, every time you look around, the police is coming to this building here. Every time you look around, come to this building arresting people. They be down there more than they be up on McAllister somewhere. And we don't need this in our neighborhood, and we wanted out our neighborhood. And he could go with them. And that's-
Thank you, sir. Next, we have Will Law.
For giving you mayor and alderman. My name is Will Law. I'm the Chief Operating Officer for Art Space Projects, and I was really here to support, if you had any questions, the item that comes up later on in the meeting. So I'll just sit back down. If you have questions, I'm here.
Okay, thank you. Next would be Mr. Joe Leggett.
I'm sorry. I'm here for the type of five or-
Oh, okay, for the president. Got it. Okay. Is any, let's see. Okay, fine. Next is Mr. Keith Turner.
Thank you very much. Keith Turner, 1320 North Jackson Street in Waukegan, Illinois. Well, I got to tie this all together pretty quick. So first of all, I want to, and I didn't know that WAGS was getting an award tonight, but I just applaud them. And you know, when I think about it, there are so many, I mean, there's thousands and thousands of people who donate their time, their talents, their money, and everything else for various causes. Many of the aldermen and the mayor and many of our audience members do that, as do I. Couple of things. Some of my pet peeves, as many of you know, and favorite topics are taxes. We just had a tax hearing increase. I'm not going to comment on that. The other is public safety and dogs, right? So here's the thing. Last, you may remember over the summer, I had what I call the Sixth Ward Rewards Program that officially ended at the end of September. However, since it's my money, I can do with it what I want. Last week, we had an incident in the neighborhood. There was a burglary. One of our other neighbors came to the assistance of the neighbor who was victimized and lent some assistance to capturing the perpetrators. That individual wants to remain anonymous. But he and I put our heads together and decided I would make a donation on his behalf to some charity. And to that end, you know, last night, I saw on Facebook a dog was brought in to Waukegan Animal Control. And that dog, folks, if you see it, it's a pitiful, it literally brought tears to my eyes. That dog is so emaciated and just abused and neglected. It makes me angry just to think of it. But what I want to do, on behalf of my anonymous neighbor, is contribute $200 towards the medical care for that animal. And then on my behalf, I'm going to contribute another $200. So you got $400 coming. I'll make sure that that's in the account tonight, okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. I should also say that Keith was the gentleman who actually suggested that WAGS be the recipient of the award. So, you know, he's been a partner with them for a number of years, so thank you very much. Next, we have Mr. Chris Blanks.
Brother Blanks, 4009 Oak Street, Waukegan. Founder, President of Black Abolition Movement for the Mind National Action Network of Lake County. And as founding president of Black Abolition Movement for the Mind in Nana Lake County, it is my position, it is my position and duty to not allow our organization or its members to be thrown under the political bus at election time in view of the council chambers camera or publicly in an attempt to acquire supporting votes or self-serving agendas or any ward or any ward of the city to be thrown under the bus to or for overzealous, and I repeat, for overzealous police officers at election time. Anyone who is sincerely and genuinely willing to work with us in the best interest of the upliftment of our community, we are open to that. Anyone who is genuinely and sincerely willing. We always have our doors open for anyone who is willing to work with us, and we stand ready. However, I would say, in working with whoever it is, if they have not been working with us before election time, before election time, we welcome an opportunity to work with us after election time, because we do not want it to be viewed as any form of a political endorsement. And so I just want to say that, that it just goes out. And that is my position as an organization here to not allow our organization or its name to be cast in any negative light for political purposes or voting advantages. Thank you for your time and your attention.
Thank you, sir. Next, we have Julie Ahern.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for this moment to speak. My name is Julie Ahern. I live at 2348 North Lewis Avenue. I've lived in Waukegan all my life. I've taught school at Andrew Cook Magnet of the Fine Arts for twenty years and also a very proud mom of two Waukegan students. And tonight, I wanted to share an idea with the Waukegan community on how to help our schools. It's quick, easy, and only costs us a minute or two of our time. And there is another community that I found that has done this. It's Seymour, Tennessee. And what they do is they only have 8,500 population. And when there is a voting contest for a school, a charity, the entire town bands together and votes. And so they are bringing a lot of money and funds to the schools and charities just by spending ten seconds a night voting. For instance, the U.S. Cellular Calling All Communities Contest, three years ago, they won Seymour the top prize, $150,000. Last year, Seymour won, again, $150,000. And this year, their third school in Little Seymour is, again, number one. And it looks like they will do that simply by bonding together and voting for whatever school, whatever charity is up there. And for me, Waukegan has always been an incredibly vibrant and active community. And if anyone would like to take this idea to their members, it's something we can all do, if WAGS, if FIST, if any organization is up. It doesn't matter if we're a member, if we have a child at that school. It would help all of us to get them materials, technology, whatever helps, a future Ray Bradbury, a future Bill Gates, to help that child. Because whatever helps our children helps our town. So I wanted to bring this message tonight. I got some of you with some flyers. If you're going somewhere, I'm going to leave some on the back table. If you can help us further. Right now, Cook is going for a Fine Arts Grant. We are merely 150 votes short of receiving a grant for our school. And if anyone can vote, it's daily till Halloween. And the directions are on the green sheet. Ten seconds done, and you have helped a child. And I know that any other school that does it, I will vote for them, any charity. So I'm going to send you some information later. This is something our community can embrace and do so easily for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. Great job. We'll get this up on our website and actually, starting for the next couple of days, we'll suspend some of our rules and regulations, if we can, if we can, regarding internet access for our employees, so that they can go on and be of some assistance for this. I'm not sure how that'll work. We'll have to check and see if that's viable. But this is something, you've done this before. And, you know, we've been supporters and will continue to in the city. And I think everybody in this room, you probably have maybe about not quite one-third of what you need. But remember, this is like Chicago. You can vote, and you can vote often. So keep that in mind. So we look forward to hearing about the success of this, you know, after it's over with. Thank you, Julie. Next, we have Calvin Mathis. Mr. Mathis?
Good evening. I just want to thank the City Council for the good job they've done this last year. I've been coming to the City Council meetings, and I see the passionate work that you do. I don't agree with every decision that you make, but I know that you work hard. And so I just want to thank you for the hard work that you've done for this past year. I just want to say to the audience, as I said when I first started coming, that sometimes I think that we let you down, because I've been coming for a year and I don't see this many people here. And usually, when I see this many people here, people come up, they give their, they lay their problems on you, and then, once you get into the city business, they're gone. And so they leave decisions on you to make. And sometimes I think that we would be served better if we attend City Council meetings. We'd get more engaged as citizens, so. And the issue that I've been kind of paying attention to for the last year is this lobbyist. I noticed that the contract was renewed, and on the last agenda, it was kind of vague. It says lobbyist, services advocate. I left my notes at work, so I'm just going on what I remember. And so I just kind of think that, you know, you voted on it, and you're going forward on it. I just think that it was vague as to what $96,000 is going to get us. $96,000. I tried to look the record up of, I think it was Elsie McGuire or whatever. The website is vague, the background is vague. What, you know, what, I mean, what do they do? What is the qualification? So $96,000, and what are the goals? I mean, if he's going to be down there working on something, what do we, what grant? Mr. Rivera, I saw him this past week. And thank you, that was a good job. He was working for the community, helping out the kids. I forget what he was working for, but anyway. And he laid it out for me very well. That one grant can make up for that $96,000. But no, it's not $96,000. It's double that. It's 100 and whatever, 96 times two is. So I just want to say that we, I think you need to narrow it down. What do you want this lobbyist to work on? There'd be more, you just can't say, you give him $96,000 and just say, "Go and do whatever you can do." Okay, and then I noticed my two minutes are winding up, I mean, three minutes. But I just want to say, $96,000, you get community services. You can, we can, more cops, more firemen, job training. FIST, I didn't know that organization. $96,000 could go a long way with them. Summer job, that's a lot of summer jobs, $96,000. These kids, they need something to do in the summer. I was just sending with a gentleman today. He said they could use lifeguards at the beach. They had to close the beach down, they didn't have lifeguards, didn't have money for that. So just wanted to mention that and just kind of put that on the agenda.
Mr. Mathis, could you please give us your address, sir?
I'm sorry. It was 528 Leath Avenue.
Okay, thank you very much. Next, we have, and this is the final public comment, will be Rita Mayfield.
Thank you. Rita Mayfield, 649 South Fulton Avenue, Waukegan. I'm here tonight as, I'm wearing double hats. I'm a constituent of the city of Waukegan. I am a lifelong resident of Waukegan. I'm also the state representative for Waukegan. I'm not here to speak on anything political. I want to, I do want to address an issue that's near and dear to my heart, and that's the issue of repatriates and recivism and helping to break the chains of recivism here in our community. And in order to do that, we need to provide individuals that return to our community, and many of them are family members, they're from here. We're not talking about individuals from all over the state. We're talking about individuals who were born and raised here in Waukegan, who have fractured paths, and they come back here to Waukegan. And they need help. They need resources. They need a place to stay. They need jobs. They need a feeling of self-worth. And they're getting that through the FIST organization. I've had a chance to partner with Mr. Schmidt on more than one occasion. I've- I've referred individuals to the organization. Everyone that I have referred there has received help in the form of housing, not always in our area. Sometimes, you know, they do help them to find homes outside of this area. They help them look for jobs, they help them with volunteerism. Oh my God, they really stress the volunteerism component, giving back to your community. And I think that's very vital. One of the things that I'm very proud of is that they do this without any state funding at all. I've offered him grants, I've gone to him, and I said, "Hey, you know, I think I got a grant that may work for you." And each time, he said, "No." He's like, "We want to do this on our own, we want to be proactive, we want to go out there." I'm trying to teach them not to be dependent on the system, but to be self-sufficient. I can't stress that enough, self-sufficiency. We don't have enough programs that promote that in this community. And I feel very strong about that. The Children of the Incarcerated Christmas Party is something that I've been a part of every single year. These children, you know, their family members aren't here. But yet, through the FISD organization, these children are able to have a normal Christmas. They're able to get gifts and just have that sense of normalcy that they otherwise would not have. I think that we really need to keep positive social service organizations here in our community. We need to build them up, not tear them down. You know, if there's a vacant building in my neighborhood that you want to come to, if you want to buy it and move some people in there, I'll welcome you because I know what you're doing firsthand, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Mayfield. Thank you, everybody. Please. Yes, ma'am?
I'm sorry, I can't be recognized. I wasn't there to speak at this important session, but I also spoke at the Texas.
Oh, that would be fine. If you intended to speak at both, please come up and reintroduce yourself. And again, you'll be, the three-minute limit will still apply. Thank you. I apologize, I didn't realize you wanted to do both.
It's rather humbling to speak after so many nice things have been said about the city of Waukegan. My name is Cindy Singh. I live at 32760 North River Road in Libertyville, Illinois, 6048. It's the very far western edge. Actually, part of our road is Waukegan. I feel Waukegan is my home. I do most of my shopping here. I remember when my kids were little, we went to Lakers when Santa Claus was still there. So I do like this city very, very much. My problem is, I went to an estate sale and I bought the house. Now, this house is at 2940 Apple Avenue on the western edge of Waukegan, kind of behind Kmart there at 120 and Green Bay Road. I bought the house because, number one, it was fairly inexpensive. It reminded me of my grandma's house in Michigan. I fell in love with it. And we thought perhaps we could either have one of our kids live in it, which is happening now, or we could fix it and perhaps sell it later. It's a wonderful piece of property. Now, what happened about two years ago, New Organics began a compost operation behind the comm ed facility at the end of that little tiny road. I sat there last Friday, October 12th, between the time of 1:30 and 1:55 p.m., and snapped photos of the activity on that quiet little road with our three homes. Here are the results of that brief time. So now, I have a home with trucks running by all day long, every day. It smells, and our efforts to remodel are pretty much in vain as far as getting a return on our investment. Does anyone want to live in a house with the danger of semis running within 10, 15 yards of your front door? Would anyone care to enjoy a summer evening with the doors open when you live next to a dump with organic materials being dumped by restaurants? Grass clippings, leaves, asphalt, branches? And have to smell rotting organic material daily? Would anyone here want to buy my house with double taxes, no water sewer, and no end in sight? I doubt it. I petition the city to move the road, the ingress egress, immediately from Apple Avenue. It's not fair. Do something about the odors, noise, and huge amounts of debris within sight and yards of my home. Or buy my home at fair market value plus the 60,000 or 70,000 of assessed value you put on us to begin with, as I spoke about in the first session. I would like to know the weight capacity for Apple Avenue. I spent about an hour on the phone one day not long ago, and no one, no one could answer my question. I was referred to the Waukegan Police Department of all places. I have called and had my concerns known to the Lake County Health Department. I would like to know if any other residential section of this city would put up with a constant swarm of semis, trucks, and trucks with trailers and landscape materials, and what I can expect in a timely fashion as far as a response from the city of Waukegan goes. There is a pretty well-known homeless population behind this property. And I can only wonder who is getting to the produce first? The people, the raccoons, the possums, the stray dogs, or the rats?
Thank you, ma'am.
This should not go on.
Your three minutes is up. Thank you very much. And it is something I just want everybody to know, and I apologize for cutting you off, but that we are having discussions internally. We're looking at how this can be handled and managed better. And the owners of the business are willing, have committed to work with us to deal with this situation. So thank you very much for your comments. We appreciate that. That does conclude public comment. I want to thank everybody that spoke. I want to thank everybody for maintaining the decorum of the chamber. We do appreciate that. And we will now move on to the minutes. I'd like to take a motion from Alderman Newsome, seconded by Alderman Conken, to approve the minutes of October 1st, 2012, regular meeting minutes and executive session minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Thank you. Now, if I could, we have some folks here that are waiting for something that actually occurs right towards the end of the agenda. And I was wondering if we would be willing to move this up to this point in the agenda. Alderman Cunningham, would you be willing to make the motion to move item under new business recommended actions by Corporation Council, item G, up to the, after the minutes? We have the motion by Alderman Cunningham, seconded by Alderman Moiseo. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm opposed.
Alderman Conken opposed to moving it.
I'm sorry, Your Honor, this hasn't come through the Public Safety Department.
Alderman, it was my understanding that this had been addressed because this was brought to us before your item, before your desire to change the process had come up?
No, sir. We put the policy, we put a freeze on all honorary street naming, put a policy in place.
You're right.
And the policy includes an application. And the application has to be filled out and then approved by the Public Safety Committee before it would be approved and brought to the council.
But I thought this was being treated in a manner that it was being grandfathered because it came before that initiative.
No, Your Honor, the only thing that we agreed to grandfather was the fact that because it had previously been asked, we would grandfather the fee. There would be no fee attached to it if they qualified to have a street naming.
Well, my interpretation of this was is that until we had an actual guidance or ordinance that the request was being treated as an effective official request, and that it would be grandfathered. That was my understanding of how it would be. Maybe Corporation Council, you weren't involved in that, but... Pardon? That came after. Oh, Louise Patterson. Patterson is already been done. Yeah, that's already been done. So this really is, as far as I understand, the only one that's before us that came up before the request to change. So that's why we felt that we should move forward with it and get it out of the way, get it over with, and start the new process effectively.
No, sir. The hold was put on after the George Patterson naming. And all would have to complete the application process at that point. Once it was in place, we put a freeze on it.
Well, I thought the freeze was to anything coming after the change, not anything to come before it. That was my interpretation.
That was discussed at the Public Safety meeting, that from that point forward, once it was approved, policy was approved, that's the way it was going to be. It was all applications, there would be no more street naming until the applications were filled out and applied for.
Looking forward from that moment?
No, from the time of the freeze.
Right, the freeze began once you did it in committee, and then it came to the City Council?
No, sir, the freeze began right away. We put the freeze on it, we approved no more street naming until a policy was in place.
Well, no, I do understand that. But this was requested before all of that was done, though?
No, sir, no.
The request was put in weeks before that was done.
Yes, it was.
And we sat with them and had a discussion that we were going to move this forward. And then, from that point on, there would be no further street namings unless they fell under the way that you had requested it be done by your committee?
I'm sorry, sir, they have to go through the procedure.
Well, at this point, I have to disagree with you, Alderman. I honestly do, sir, that this, I believe, was grandfathered by the fact that the request came not just a matter of hours, but weeks.
There was no talk of grandfathering anything, sir.
Well, from my standpoint, when I see ordinances that are done, if something was done before that, that was done based on how the system operated up to that point, it would be grandfathered. And it would be just like a certain type of business license that somebody might have that might be grandfathered, a liquor license, something along those lines. Yes, Alderman Tempest?
If I may, Your Honor?
Yes, sir.
I know where Alderman Conken is coming from. We did have a group come that wanted, we did have a group that came that wanted down on 14th Street to do it. We also had the Patterson group that came to the council. And we waived the rule, we heard them that night, they're all here. This other group was here also, and their thoughts were there, their voices were heard already. And then, if you recall, we decided we should really have an ordinance in place to take care of this in the future. The only one that I knew that came after that standpoint was Louis' grand-grandson wanted him to be Ambrosial. And I answered him in a nice way, I didn't think it was okay. But I think in this, I want to commend Alderman Conken for the research he did and so forth.
Absolutely.
I really do, because there is a big cost involved. And maybe if they could help us out just a little bit with the cost of putting the sign up. We waived this this time, and from this point on, I think with Ambrosial, I think, no. After the fact, after the ordinance was done. They started their proposal before the ordinance was actually in effect, Alderman Conken. And I know where you're coming from, and I just think it's not a clear-cut decision of where it started, where it's going. And I just think you're better off letting the group go this evening, and everything's in place, and it's real clear in the future where we are.
Yeah, it was my understanding this would be the last of its kind.
Yes.
That there would be no more following this.
We'll go through the ordinance if we have affected that.
Yeah, it's tough to, it's tough to apply an ordinance to something retroactively from a legal standpoint. It could be very troubling. So that is something that I think that, and Alderman Conken...
I'm not going to argue the point of retroactive, Renatas, it was in the mix already.
And I agree with Alderman Tempest's comments. I mean, the research you did, the fact that you brought so much of this to light, which we weren't aware of, I mean, to be honest with you. And the different parameters that have been brought in, I think, will be very successful in managing this program in the future. But I would just respectfully request that the body up here allow this to move forward, and that we will take a voice vote.
Your Honor, it still hasn't come through the Public Safety Committee.
But that is after this request, that that ordinance was created.
That has been the usual avenue of our honorary street signs, although that process has been skipped a few times.
Yeah.
That is the usual process, and it should go through the Public Safety Committee.
I do understand.
And it has not.
I do understand, Alderman, and I apologize. I'm not trying to get you angry, and I am sorry. But once you've skipped, once, you set a precedent. And we need to live this out right now and get it off the books and move forward with what you've brought to the table as far as a new way of approaching this, which I have no argument with at all.
But, Your Honor, the person that skipped it was you.
I'm sorry.
You're the one that skipped the Public Safety Committee and brought these things straight to council.
It was, the request was made before council.
I'm talking about other requests. The reason that they've been skipped is because you've brought them straight to the council floor and not through the committee.
Could you please explain that?
The George Patterson honorary street name was brought by you to the council floor, not through the Public Safety Committee.
Which was voted on by the City Council unanimously.
And it was, but it should have come through the Public Safety Committee first. And it did not.
Okay, and before that?
Curtis Christian did not come through the Public Safety Committee. That was brought straight to the council floor.
That, again, was a request by some council members and others that approved of it.
But as a policy, or as what was usual, at least to my knowledge, it came through a committee before it came to council, and those didn't.
Well, that wasn't explained to me. And I have to be honest with you, Alderman. My concern is now that those were brought forward and then allowed to be voted on, even though, as you're saying, that they were in, maybe somewhat indifferent to what you see the rules, but that it was approved. At that time, if you had brought up this issue, we probably would have dealt with it as you wanted it to be dealt with a long time ago. And once they were approved, I had no indication that there was any violation of protocol. So you kind of put me in a bad spot, too. I was never advised that this was a committee issue, that it was one that was brought to the City Council for approval in the past to be acted on by the entire, by the entire council. It was never, from my understanding, in any ordinance that required a certain procedure to do it.
Okay.
But there is now, and that now applies. But as I said, I think that if we could just get this one off the books, let it go, deal with it, and we move forward under the agents that you've requested in that fashion, that's how it'll go from now on. But this was one.
My understanding was from that point forward, it was going to follow the policy that we put in place.
Right, from that point forward, but this request preceded that?
No. All requests after the Patterson one, that were not approved before Patterson would go through the process.
Well, and I apologize if I had a misunderstanding, but from a legal standpoint, they had made the request to me, an official. I brought, it was known that they came here to the City Council to make the request. It became a public request. It was before the ordinance was enacted. We cannot look backwards on an ordinance. You can only go forward for application. So my only request would be that we allow this to be voted on tonight. And again, from this point on, the standards that Alderman Conken has requested and put in place, which I think we all agree are good, will then be held for any other requests.
And if they in good faith would like to donate a little money toward making the sign, it'd be nice.
We can work on that. I see some nodding heads here. So we'll be able to figure something out. So if I might, at this point, we have moved this up to proceeding the minutes. Let me get off of here if I could. It's going to be a simple voice vote. I'll take the motion by Alderman Cunningham, seconded by Alderman May, to, for the approval of the honorary naming of 14th Street between Greenfield Avenue and Lewis Avenue, the north side, to be titled Prince Paul Drive. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The eyes have it, thank you. And we will, we'll meet soon to talk about implementation. But it's one thing, please, stop, please. I don't want anything here to be taken as an attack on Alderman Conken and what he has done. He did the right thing. He researched this item. He brought us a new way of doing it. This is what we're going to do from this point forward. And so, please, this was, he had absolute his right to argue his point. And we all support that. So as it is right now, the item is passed, and we'll move on.
Your Honor, if I may?
Oh, yes, Alderman Cunningham.
If I may, the organization that is here before us today actually approved of this process that Alderman Conken has set forth. It was their belief, in talking to some of the members, is that they thought this type of process was already in place. So that is, so from an agreeance standpoint, the organization is in full agreeance with how the process should be. It was just a little, as it was confusing for us as to how it was act out that particular time. But I want to share that with Alderman Conken. And I do believe that now that we have a process of how we deal with these honorary street signs, not only from the beginning, but throughout its lifetime, it's, something's going to be much, much better for not only our citizens, but for those who come to us in the future. Thank you, and thank you, Alderman Conken.
Thank you. And if the group is willing to abide by what Alderman Conken has put forth for future regulations, that's fine. If not, it would fall under the old one. So we'll have a discussion on that in time. So thank you very much. Yes, sir, Alderman Conken, please.
I'd just like to let the gentleman know that please, in no way consider this an attack on your organization. It's an outstanding organization. You guys have been around for a long time, and we're very happy to have you in Waukegan. It's just that the standards were put in place. And my impression was that it was going to, from now on, they were coming through the council, and the application process was in place. My, Your Honor, I'll be honest with you, my, since they had put the request in earlier, I was, had every intent of waiving that fee because that was not in place at the time, so.
Thank you. Thank you.
No, that's fine, but congratulations, gentlemen.
Okay, thank you very much. We will move on now to resolutions, proclamations, presentations, and appointments. Item A, like a motion by Alderman May, seconded by Alderman Rivera, excuse me, to reappoint Steve Colber and Porfirio Garcia to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Roll call, please.
Alderman May?
Aye.
Alderman Velco?
Aye.
Alderman Rivera?
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham?
Aye.
Alderman Conken?
Aye.
Alderman Moizio?
Aye.
Alderman Beadling?
Aye.
Alderman Newsom?
Aye.
Alderman Tempest?
Aye.
Ayes have it, thank you. Next, item B, we have a resolution recognizing the members of the Waukegan Renaissance Commission. Motion by Alderman Rivera, seconded by Alderman Moizio, to approve the resolution, which will be read following the vote. Let's do a roll call on this. Roll call, please.
Alderman May?
Aye.
Alderman Velco?
Aye.
Alderman Rivera?
Aye, but I'd like to hear the names as well.
Alderman Cunningham?
I'd like to hear the names.
Alderman Conken?
Aye.
Alderman Moizio?
Aye.
Alderman Beadling?
May pass.
Alderman Newsom?
Aye abstain.
I'm sorry?
She abstains, she was a member of the Renaissance Commission.
And Alderman Tempest?
Aye.
The ayes have it, thank you. Dave, you're going to assist us with this, we have the names to be read. I would, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Whereas the City of Waukegan established a Waukegan Renaissance Commission to help foster growth and economic opportunity in our community by focusing on the fundamental principles outlined in the Waukegan Lakefront and Downtown Master Plan. And whereas the Waukegan Renaissance Commission has been an important mechanism in the success and progress that has been made in the implementation of this plan, and has been instrumental in guiding proper development throughout the downtown and lakefront. And whereas the City of Waukegan would like to publicly thank the civic-minded volunteer members of the Waukegan Renaissance Commission for so willingly sharing their time and talents with us, including Dr. Donaldo Bautiste, Harold Beadling, Barry Burton, Harry Kane, Tony Figueroa, Richard Gombowski, Sarah Griffin, Duncan Henderson, Joseph Leggett, Patrick Morris, Edith Newsom, Greg Petrie, Mike Rodriguez, and Diane Verratti. And now therefore be it resolved that a suitable boss copy of this resolution signed by the mayor and the city clerk be presented to the members of the Waukegan Renaissance Commission, along with a certification of appreciation and recognition of their dedication service to our community and for their unwavering support of our vision, dated the 15th day of October 2012.
Let's give them a round of applause, please. Thank you. I'm just going to read each name, and if you would please come up, I'll hand you your proclamation and the resolution, and just wait up here so that Dave can get a couple of photographs. First is Diane Verratti. Is Diane here this evening? There she is, Diane.
Thank you.
Are we almost having the same color?
Next, we have Alderman Edith Newsom. I don't think, is he here? Oh, Pat, there you are, I didn't see you. Yes, please stay up here if you would. Next is Mr. Joseph Leggett. Next is Mr. Richard Grabowski. And last is Alderman Harold Beadley. Okay, I'll ask. We'll get him up to the picture. He had to come from the right side. You know what I'd like to do, I know that we've kind of gone a little while, we haven't really gotten deep into the meat of the meeting, but would anybody mind, if anybody wanted to say something real briefly about their time, their service on the Renaissance Commission, if they would be allowed to? Do I see any, no? Would anybody like to speak to their time of service?
Diane, you're fantastic.
Well, I guess I would like to thank all of the members of the commission for all of the time that they've spent, and our efforts to improve the city of Waukegan, especially the downtown area and lakefront, and it's been certainly gratifying to serve on this commission, and I would like to also thank all of those folks who assisted in some of the ideas that we attempted to initiate. Thank you.
Did we miss anybody that's here tonight that didn't get their name called? Just in case we want to get you up for a photograph? No? Okay, thank you. Well, let's stay up here for a quick photo op.
I don't deserve this award, thank you.
Three, two, one. Thank you, everybody. Okay, thanks, everybody, for your patience in this long kind of introductory section to this meeting, but that's part of what happens sometimes. I think they were, the comments that we heard were good. You know, it really would be nice to have this chamber filled for every city council meeting, though, I really do agree with that comment, it would be great to have more people coming and listening and, you know, voicing their opinion. That's part of what helps us to govern and helps us make our decisions, so, again, thanks, everybody. Next up, we have the committee reports and motions. And Alderman Newsom, the finance committee report, please. Oh, yes, Alderman?
Is there any appetite on the council tonight for omnibus?
I won't.
No, Alderman Tempest, okay.
Just checking.
That's okay.
I think the public needs to know about each one.
Sure. Alderman Newsom.
Thank you, Your Honor. The finance committee met this evening at 6:00 PM, we have five items on the agenda. Item A, authorize use of bond proceeds to fund the award of a contract to decker fire and safety for fire station improvements, specifically the installation of a sprinkler system at Fire Station 4, in the amount not to exceed $5,370. Budget code 307-1307-26392, and I so move.
We have the motion by Alderman Newsom, seconded by Alderman Conken. Alderman Conken, will you offer the second for that?
Yes, I will.
No, thank you. Roll call, oh, I'm sorry, comments or questions? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Alderman May?
Aye.
Alderman Velco?
Aye.
Alderman Rivera?
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham?
Aye.
Alderman Conken?
Aye.
Alderman Moizio?
Aye.
Alderman Beadling?
Aye.
Alderman Newsom?
Aye.
Alderman Tempest?
Aye.
The ayes have it, thank you.
Item B, authorize a waiver of the bid process, Waukegan Roofing Company for fire station improvements, specifically the partial roof replacement of Fire Station 1, in the amount not to exceed $63,163. Budget code 307-1307-26392, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Newsom, seconded by Alderman Conken. Do we have any comments or questions? Alderman Tempest?
Yes, it says waive the bid procedure. Did we have quotes, or what did we have?
Chief.
It was, let's see.
The chief can tell you.
This is the lowest qualified. This actually is not the waiver of the bid procedures, the bid procedures did go through, and this should actually say to authorize the lowest bidder through that process would be Waukegan Roofing.
Okay, can I read? Because it should say lowest qualified.
Thank you for the correction.
Let's make a motion to amend by Alderman Newsom, seconded by Alderman Conken, so that the language reads authorize the award to the lowest bidder-
Qualified bidder.
Lowest qualified bidder, if we could. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, okay, we will, Alderman Newsom, you have authored, I'm sorry, made the motion to approve, seconded by Alderman Conken. We have the question by Alderman Tempest, do we have any further comments or questions? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Alderman May?
Aye.
Alderman Velco?
Aye.
Alderman Rivera?
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham?
Aye.
Alderman Conken?
Aye.
Alderman Moizio?
Aye.
Alderman Beadling?
Aye.
Alderman Newsom?
Aye.
Alderman Tempest?
Aye.
Ayes have it, thank you.
Item C, grant a sole source exemption, thereby waiving the bid and further authorize the building and coal compliance manager to enter into a contract with Lakeland Larson Elevator for the repair of the police station elevator in amount not to exceed $34,600. Budget code 307-1307-26492, and I so move.
We have the motion by Alderman Newsom, seconded by Alderman Conken. Do we have any comments or questions? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Alderman May?
Aye.
Alderman Velco?
Aye.
Alderman Rivera?
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham?
Aye.
Alderman Conken?
Aye.
Alderman Moizio?
Aye.
Alderman Beadling?
Aye.
Alderman Newsom?
Aye.
Alderman Tempest?
Aye.
Ayes have it, thank you.
Item D, authorize use of bond proceeds to fund the award of a contract to Lakeland Larson Elevator for ADA improvements, specifically the repair of the police station elevator in amount not to exceed $34,600. Budget code 307-1307-26492, and I so move.
We have the motion by Alderman Newsom, seconded by Alderman Conken. Do we have any comments or questions? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Alderman May?
Aye.
Alderman Velco?
Aye.
Alderman Rivera?
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham?
Aye.
Alderman Conken?
Aye.
Alderman Moizio?
Aye.
Alderman Beadling?
Aye.
Alderman Newsom?
Aye.
Ayes have it, thank you. That concludes the finance committee.
That concludes the finance committee, thank you.
Thank you for all your hard work. Next is Alderman Moizio and the Public Works Committee.
Thank you, Your Honor. We met today, first item of business is item A, draft specification advertised for a request for proposals for the garbage contract that is due to expire on December 1st, 2013, and I so move.
We have the motion by Alderman Moizio, seconded by Alderman Cunningham. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, thank you.
Awarded 2012 skip-patching contract to the low-qualified bidder of Peter Baker and Son Company for amount not to exceed $200,000. Funds are available for this maintenance contract using MFT funds in line item 2289-22825485, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Moizio, seconded by Alderman Velco. Do we have any comments or questions? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Alderman May?
Aye.
Alderman Velco?
Aye.
Alderman Rivera?
Aye.
Alderman Conken?
Aye.
Alderman Moizio?
Aye.
Alderman Beadling?
Aye.
Alderman Newsom?
Aye.
Alderman Tempest?
Aye.
Ayes have it, thank you.
Item C, motion to waive the bid procedure and approve sidewalk removal and replacement adjacent to the culture building at the southwest corner of Washington Street and Martin Luther King Junior Avenue in Tiff District Number 4 by Pepper Construction, contract for the art space project in amount of $151,834 from the line item 238-1238-26492, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Moizio, seconded by Alderman May. Do we have any comments? Yes, Alderman Tempest?
Thank you. I have some concerns. I understand sidewalks, the old-time sidewalks downtown had the vaults underneath. If you remember some other ones on Geno C Street that we had, we had our public works director hire a block guy, cement block guy, and blocked it up, and we filled it in. I don't like the idea of no bids. I don't like that at all, and it looks like they want us to chip in $151,000. Hey, hey, wait a minute, wait a minute. It's your vault underneath there, your easement underneath, I think this is, needs more work and more study. I'd sure want to go get some bids on a price like that. I know we did it a lot cheaper before, down by the Globe, when we fixed that sidewalk. They blocked that up with cement blocks, and then they filled it in, and it worked fine. I don't know what kind of specifications they have, they're going to pour a cement wall in there, they're going to block it up, how do we, how do they get that kind of money, which is no bids? And then, we're going to do it. I'm a little confused.
Tom?
Tom, could you come up and help with this, provide some of the information? It's, some of it's technical, but part of it is, Larry, is the amount of time left to do it.
Well, that's not my problem, that's their problem.
Could?
A big part of the cost is the structural work that needs to be done, the wall that's under the building, there's, I don't know if you've seen the specs in there with the structural engineers, it's not just blocking up a doorway, they're saying that the wall isn't solid enough to fill with-
Well, whose wall is it? It's their wall for the building.
Absolutely.
Well, then, why am I going to pay for it? Excuse me, excuse me. No wonder we got financial problems. Tell them that they're remodeling the building, art space.
Fine with me.
Tell them to pour the wall, we'll fix the sidewalk.
It's, if I remember correctly now, this money is coming from which fund?
The Tiff District. It's coming from the Tiff money.
The Tiff fund.
It's still our money.
I understand.
It's still our money to help other, they've got a contract to fix a hotel, right?
I'm not sure what, what all their contract covers.
The money comes from the Tiff District, well-
Noel, can you shed any light on this at all? This is from Tiff District 4 that we are closing out, correct?
Right, that's correct.
And this has to be spent by December?
Yes.
Okay.
That is correct.
A lot of police have been spending money on the downtown, the Tiff area, beside helping the art space, and their money.
Noel, maybe Noel.
I just, I brought up a point, I-
I, that's fine.
It is funding from Tiff District 4, this property is in the Tiff District. Our hope is that by doing this project, filling in the vault and replacing the sidewalks, the sidewalks would be a responsibility of the city at some point anyway, and it's, it's the way that water is accessing the basement of the building, so by doing it now, it prevents the city from having to deal with it in future years when it might have to be out of general fund or some other source of revenue rather than the Tiff money. Does that-
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Noel.
I'm going to vote no, so go ahead.
Thank you, Alderman. And I'm going to say something now so that nobody thinks that this just, you know, we're trying to pull something here. I'm not happy with this either.
Thank you.
I was not happy when this was brought to us, in fact, none of us were happy about this.
Yes, thank you, Noel.
I'm going to vote no, so go ahead.
Thank you, Alderman. And I'm going to say something now so that nobody thinks that this just, you know, we're trying to pull something here. I'm not happy with this either.
Thank you.
I was not happy when this was brought to us. In fact, none of us were happy about this. I'm not going to comment on partnerships and things like that, but it, it ends up that if we don't do this work, this project gets delayed. It's just too much involved in this right now to go back. There truly is. And we don't want to do something wrong. So we do end up having to put this money out of the Tiff, which will be closing in December, so that we can create new Tiff districts to generate new revenue for projects and incentives. But it is something that not any one person that was sitting in these meetings engaged in this was happy with the way this worked out. But it is what it is. The project is so close to being finished, we can't turn our back on it now as much as we would like to because we're disappointed by this. It is what it is, so let's just finish it. Let's just cross the home plate and move on from there. And Alderman Tempest, again, I have, you know, your comments are right on the money. They truly are. But here we are, we need to vote on it, we need to move it through.
Your Honor?
Yes, sir. Alderman Cunningham.
I want to be very clear. I understand what our public works director, I understand his position on, from a managing of our city infrastructure. But what's disappointing to me, and I've been voiced about this culture hotel project from day one. Culture hotel project with more city funds, still don't have no city bodies there. You did not even ask one of our own people to do electric, plumbing, carpentry, anything. And I mean skilled people, not just some Joe Blow off the streets. And I know there are skilled people in the City of Waukegan, last time I checked. This is a labor town. But you have the audacity to want us to come up with another $150,000 because this is a project that you took on that you didn't know about, but you couldn't find a way to get some of our people to get some of these jobs. And I mean skilled. What I mean by skilled, those who have the craftsmanship to cut a board, to nail something on the wall, to do some bricklaying. You didn't say anything about that. You went through this process and said, "Well, according to our laws, we don't really need that. It doesn't apply to that." But you need us now. I would love for you to say, "You know what? Pepper not going to do this." There's somebody that's on, who's done concrete in the City of Waukegan, little small guy who can do that for us. That's what I would love to hear you say, since we just go close up $150,000. But it irks me, and I want you to know this, it irks me when I ride past that lot over there full of a lot of people that don't live here. They even got their own little section for them to even park their cars at. That's why I'm voting no. I'm not voting no for the fact that our public work director understands there's a need that needs to get it done. I'm voting no because we want to send a message to individuals like you. This is a great, this is a great project. It will be probably one of the finest projects one of our cities has ever had, and I had the opportunity to be here with. But when it's said and done, I don't see nobody from Waukegan. Not a black, or white, or male, or female, or Latino, nobody. That's what disappoints me about this. And that project cost a lot of cash for the last two years. In this low-down economy, it could even help the recidivism rate.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Beadley.
I'm just going to make the comment, from my 35 years' experience in construction, skill knows no color. Skill is just simply skill, and you start at a young age and you learn over the years. And it takes a very, very long time to be a skilled tradesman. I would suggest if Alderman Cunningham is a contractor in mind that can do this project for the same amount of money, let's have at it. Because I don't care anymore. I'm tired of hearing this.
Alderman Beadley, please.
I'm done.
Thank you. Okay.
Let's vote, call the question.
It is what it is. Now, I need to make sure that everybody understands that this has to pass by a two-thirds majority.
Call the question.
So we're calling the question. Roll call, please.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
No.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Beadley.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
No.
Alderman Tempest.
No.
Six to three, it does pass with the required majority. Thank you. And it is a passionate thing for us, this project. It's a big investment for not only the city, but the state, the federal government. All kinds of people have money in this. And it was, it was disappointing to have this pop up like it did. But it's done, we're going to finish it. We're going to get people in there, and they're going to have an impact on our downtown. And hopefully, this is the start of the new Waukegan. Okay.
I indeed.
Mayor, I have one question.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, I didn't see you, Alderman Rivera. I apologize.
Did you just get this notification within the past week, couple weeks, or how long? And also, my second question.
We've been trying to find a way to deal with this.
My second question is, who's representing us during this construction? Do we have our engineers there when they have their meetings, construction meetings?
Tom has gone over to the site, Dave Marion has gone over to the site. They have reviewed the requests. They have made sure that what they've asked for has been necessary. So we have been represented throughout the process.
Okay. Just wanted the people to know.
Sure, understood. Roll call, please.
It's already been voted. Item D, Your Honor.
Oh, I'm sorry.
All right.
Oh, I apologize.
Item D, motion to approve a contract with Shabaka and Associates to conduct a feasibility study for sand management in the Waukegan Harbor Approach Channel in amount of $25,000 from line item 236-123624438, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Moizio, seconded by Alderman May. Do we have any comments or questions?
Here I go.
Yes, sir. Alderman Tempest.
I thought we had a port district. And isn't the port district in charge of the airport and the harbor? Why would this study come from them rather than us? Because the gypsum plant pays the port authority money. Yacht Club pays them money. Larson Marine might, I don't know. Why are we paying for this feasibility study when we have a port authority? I think the public needs to know this, John. They need to know why.
Alderman, I think Alderman May can address those concerns. She was at some of these.
Or the mayor.
Or the mayor can maybe address.
Basically, what's happened is, is that, as people know, that our, front of our harbor gets silted in, just so we have some background. We had a really bad hit when we had that nor'easter last year that did, put a lot of tonnage of sand in the front. Now, it's open again because the Army Corps has opened it right now. But this is a problem that's going to continue to occur over and over and over for years to come. We approached the port authority, they had approached the local businesses down there. They were not able to get them to chip in. But why is it ours? Why are we taking ownership of this situation? Because the city has probably the most valuable property that exists on the lakefront is owned by the City of Waukegan, especially in that harbor area. Now, the cleanup in the harbor will be finished. Everything should be done in about 18 months' time. During that 18 months, we need to find a solution to deal with this problem with the sand traveling from the north, coming around the barriers, and being left in the mouth of our harbor, which not only makes it difficult or impossible for the large commercial traffic to get in and out, but it also makes it difficult for the recreational boaters to get in and out as well. You have sailboats, you have larger craft that have eight-foot drafts and deeper sometimes. There are issues in regards to being able to make sure that they're able to have access to the yacht club, to the docks when they are replaced, depending on how that is approached. If we lose that north harbor, that will badly damage our efforts to redevelop our property on the Coke Plant Site, on the OMC property. It will do grave injury to Larson Marine's ability to operate, and it will also devalue the property. It will be very tough to get the type of development that we all would like to see, the valuable, expensive type of development we would like to see down there unless this harbor is kept open and free for passage. Now, this is again Tiff money that will be used for this. It's money that's part of the Tiffs that we're closing down on the lakefront, and more value will be created over the years after we draw the new boundaries, but this is the spend down of the Tiff money. I can't force the businesses on the lakefront to do something they don't want to do. We don't, we can't do it. The port authority made a good faith effort, but it didn't, they did not respond. So someone is going to end up carrying some of the burden on this. It will be us to start with, but I can tell you, the city will not be responsible for the ultimate project that solves this problem.
Dredging.
Not just the dredging. Hopefully, the goal is to avoid dredging, that you would extend one of the seawalls to deflect the sand so that it doesn't come into the mouth of the harbor, and we'll actually build our public beach, the swimming beach, will grow a little bit as a result of it. But this is something that we can't just turn our back on it and walk away. There's too much at stake here. Alderman Rivera, I apologize.
No, no, that's okay, Mayor, but you mentioned Larson Marine. Knowing that it's going to damage their, you know, work there too as well for Larson Marine, why wouldn't they want to?
I can't answer that.
You know, couple or whatever.
Alderman, I don't have an answer for you.
I don't understand that.
I don't have an answer.
Your Honor?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
I didn't see you.
Can I speak first, Your Honor?
Could, yeah, go ahead, Alderman Moizio.
I didn't get on my.
Come up to the.
I didn't get on my soapbox at the committee meeting. I thought I'd save it for this time. But I'm a little tired of the harbor and all the money we have to pour into it and all this and that, when, in my mind, it really only services one person, and that's gypsum. That's really, at the end of the day, in my mind. I may be a little crazy, but that's okay. I really think, at the end of the day, that's the only person that's ever going to benefit from the dredging of getting, making a deep-water harbor. The feds keep saying, "You got to do this," and then, oh, the EPA, and into this and the that. But as long as gypsum is down there operating, you will have what you have now. No one's going to build anything and live next to a wallboard factory. Are we kidding ourselves? That's always been my point from day one. And dredging and the PCBs and all that, it depends on who you talk to. Of course, we'd like to get it off the EPA list. But how contaminated is it? You going to eat 20 fish out of there a day? I don't know anybody eats 20 fish out of there a day. So as far as I'm concerned, I'm not going to spend any more money on that harbor unless it benefits Waukegan. And in my opinion, I may be wrong, but I don't see how any more money in that harbor, including that dredging, which is going to cost an astronomical amount of money, which is our money, even if it's federal money, it's still our money. You talk about a boondoggle of the taxpayers. I'm against it. And that's my soapbox for the day. Thank you.
Well, if I could say one thing in response, Alderman, that to lose, for Larson, to lose their ability to function on that harbor would certainly lose jobs. The issue of US gypsum is not what this is completely wrapped around. We're trying to create a harbor that's a viable, living harbor that will allow sailboats to come in, that will allow large yachts to come in. If we lose the ability for traffic to come in and out of the harbor beyond the, beyond the commercial craft, the ones that are carrying the tonnage, that is going to reduce the value and reduce the interest in the property that is around the harbor. One of the things is that if you look at, come down Seahorse Road and you're heading towards the north, the area that we would be building in, by and large, is actually across more from Larson Marine than it is from US gypsum. And even that, some of that was, is designated for fire station, police station, possibly a school, or it could actually be part of the final resolution of the deal relating to slip three for Larson Marine. So I don't want, I'm just afraid, Alderman, of the concept of turning our back on it because we actually have a great deal of skin in the game down there.
Mayor, and I appreciate that, but so do, so do they.
They do, but they.
Then chip in.
But we can't turn our back on it now.
Well, then, quit looking to the taxpayer all the time. Chip in.
You're, I don't disagree with you.
It's $25,000. Chip in, people.
We wanted them to.
If you want the advantage of it, chip in.
But remember now, this is Tiff money.
It's still, but still, it's still these people's money.
Alderman, I know that.
Can I clarify something too?
Yes, please.
Sorry, I just like to.
If you don't mind, go ahead.
John Shabika, Shabika &amp; Associates, I've been working with the city engineering department, legal department, the CAG Group, the port authority, and the EPA, and the Corps of Engineers for a long time, and I just want to clarify a couple of things. One, this isn't about dredging. This is about putting in place a sand management plan primarily for the beach and the north part of the beach, and it's something that has never been in place for Waukegan. And this is something that, to contradict Mayor Sabanjan, I'm not looking at that beach getting bigger. I may even be looking at that beach getting smaller. And part of our challenge is working with the industry, the CAG Group, the EPA, city staff, even Public Works, to see what are the things that we can do in-house, knowing that we don't have millions of dollars to continue to throw at that harbor. And this may be a $5,000 idea at the end of the day where we may just come in with bulldozers and take sand off the north side and deliver it back to Illinois Beach State Park, which was how it was originally designed as a sand management plant, and nothing like that has been put in place. And our plan is to work with the industry there, since we have resources there, to say, and you are correct, they have skin in the game. We also have equipment, we have marine contractors there. What are work that we could do that may be work we can do in kind, but we haven't identified what we can do? And the best part about this plan is we recognize the fact that the city does not have money. And we're working with people like Dold's Office and Kirk's Office, who supported the EPA $32 million dredging of the harbor, to say, "We're going to do a sand management plan, and guess what? We understand that it's going to be environmentally right, but we would like your support to do a lot of this work without a permit." This is going to be a politically charged, and it's mostly going to be me getting beat up by the CAG Group because Susie Schreiber's not here, is she? up by the CAG Group because Susie Schreiber's not here, is she? Okay, good. Nobody has to walk me to my car. From the standpoint that we recognize the fact that work is going to have to start happening to that beach, and the goal is to keep the sand out of the harbor. So, thank you.
Alderman Tempest.
I'd like to respond to some things you've said, Your Honor.
Sure.
If I may.
Please.
Number one, the Corps of Engineers has always kept the harbor open. The Corps, it dredged constantly.
I'm talking to Mike.
Constantly. The Corps, thank you. The Corps of Engineers, thank you, John. The Corps of Engineers has always kept the harbor open. They've dredged it for years and years. This last year, the Gypsum had come in with half loads because the harbor started to fill in, and finally, they got an emergency, and they finally dredged it. Am I correct? Now, what I've seen over the years, the north beach, the environmental, the dunes keep getting more and more and more and more. I don't need no study from you to tell me that. No, common sense. Sabanjan One, that's your dad, I always call him Sabanjan One, so we don't get them mixed up. Sabanjan One, Sabanjan One took a grader, a road grader up there, and grated that thing out. Grated that sand out, all some way, I believe. But then everybody says, "Oh, you can't, the magic of the dunes." We've got the birds there, and we've got the one guy with the birds and what have you. And that sand, that keeps filtering down and filling the harbor up. Hey, and you're right. Well, I don't need your $25,000 study to tell me to move sand from one place to the other. That's just common sense. And our problem, if we don't keep that channel dredged with the Corps of Engineers, the yacht club's going to go out of business. The Larson Marine can say goodbye because it's the federal government's responsibility to keep that harbor open. That's a safe harbor. In case there's a storm comes up for an emergency, it's important that that harbor stays open as a national disaster site to come into for safe, for safety. And our state representatives, the hell, these lobbyists, they ought to get the message from the voters. Hey, you represent us, keep that open. That's your job. That's a safe harbor. But all this other, God, I've been around, hell, they must have plans and plans up there in the planning department, stacks of plans that we never followed through on. And if you give me a good plan, how much money is the plan going to cost me to implement? Who's going to get the money to implement your plan?
That's the challenge. The challenge is to start with the industry first.
Well, I can save $25,000 without hiring you.
Yeah, we recognize the fact from day one that it's not about a money issue right now. And that's the goal, is to figure out what we can do.
Okay. This is, this is what's before us right now. We have the Army Corps of Engineers, which has announced in meetings up in Milwaukee and other places that I've attended, that this harbor is one of a number of small-to-medium-size harbors that they are officially intending to abandon.
Yeah.
That means that it will no longer be designated as a port of refuge, that it won't be maintained by the Army Corps of Engineers as far as the dredging. Because of the amount of tonnage coming in and out of the businesses is not what they would like to see as a standard. They are apparently, from what I understand, and John, if I've got this wrong, investing a huge sum of money in a port in, is it Cleveland?
Yeah.
Billions. And that's where this money's going. It has been collected from every ounce of freight that has gone across the Great Lakes for decades. And that money is supposed to have been kept in a fund that is to be used for the city of Waukegan, Racine, Kenosha, other places with these same-size harbors to maintain them. Now, they've decided they don't want to do that. It's going to be a real brawl to keep this thing going. In June, at the U.S. Conference of Mayors, I asked the U.S. Conference of Mayors to support with a resolution all harbors the size of Waukegan that we want to keep open, so that the Army Corps of Engineers got the message very clearly from the mayors in this Midwest Great Lakes region.
Good.
That we do not agree with this. But that doesn't mean it's a fait accompli as far as what we want. We still have a lot of fighting. We've been working with our lobbyists. We've been working with Congressman Dold. We've talked to Senator Durbin. I've talked to Senator Kirk about it when I ran into him, as I told you a few weeks back. In fact, I've got to make an appointment to go in and see him to continue this conversation. It is going to be a knock-down, drag-out brawl to keep this harbor maintained in some fashion. I think, John, the concept is, is to do something that doesn't require the continual dredging, whether it's extending the seawall, whether it's doing something else, but that's the goal. So...
As much in-house as possible.
Pardon?
And as much in-house as possible.
As much in-house as possible. But also, if we can get the state or the feds to pay for as much of it as possible, I say go for it.
Right.
Because that's the big pot of money. And it is, we don't want them to ever succeed in being able to say that they have officially turned their back on Waukegan and these other ports. It is, it's fearful to me. Because imagine our harbor silted in with green algae across the surface of it, odors, craft having trouble getting in and out, overheating as they are right now in the South Harbor because of the amount of growth that has occurred because of all the heat and sunlight that have filtered down through the water, and also because the water's more clear now due to zebra mussels than it ever has been. And this is affecting every bit of lakefront operations all across the Great Lakes. It's not just us. So we do have to take our destiny in hand, and we're going to have to admit to that. This is the first step in it. Maybe we won't have to pay any more money. But if we don't start here, you know, the message to the Army Corps is, we don't care either. I think this is, this is something we need to do. I truly believe that. Do we have any other comments or questions? Seeing none, do we have, did we have the motion in second?
Yeah, I have motion.
Yeah.
Okay, roll call on that, please.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
No.
Alderman Conkin.
No.
Alderman Moiseo.
No.
Alderman Beadley.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
No.
Eyes have it. Thank you. Next is labor relations. Thank you very much for the Public Works Committee's hard work, Alderman Moiseo. We appreciate that. Next is labor relations, and I'm going to, I'm the chairman of this committee, but I am going to hand this off to Alderman Moiseo because it does have to do with the mayor's salary in the next coming term, and I felt that it would not be appropriate for me to address either item A or item B. So Alderman Moiseo, please.
Thank you. Item A, motion to establish the salaries of the mayor and city clerk effective May 1st, 2013 through April 30th, 2017, at the 2012 salary amount, which is a freeze, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Moiseo.
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Rivera. Do we have any comments or questions?
There was some comments about this and a lot of discussion about this in a couple of meetings. The reason that the clerk and the mayors were sort of in there, we'll get to that when we get to item B about the treasurer. My only comment is I want people to understand, there's been talk of city manager, city administrator, this and that, but under this current system, the mayor is the day-to-day CEO of the city. And if we're going to approve this, which we have before, and the mayor is the day-to-day manager of the city. So if we approve this for the next four years, the mayor will continue to be the day-to-day manager of the city. Not a city administrator, not a city manager, but the mayor. So whoever is elected to the mayor's position will be the day-to-day manager. That is how this system is set up. This is how it's been set up for years. I want the people to understand that. That person is the CEO, the mayor. So by doing this, as we've done before, we can't, once we set this, we're not going to be able to change it in two years and say, "Well, we want the mayor to be part-time, and we want to hire a city manager." Can't do that. This salary is set for the next four years, both the mayor and the clerk, on this item A. And those are my comments. Thank you.
And I just wanted to add to that. As far as the city manager is concerned, you would need to have a referendum to change to that form of government as well.
You would not be able to change that until after this elect mayor cycle. So it'd be four years after the mayor's elected after that.
Two years.
Yeah, you can put it on the coming spring election, but it would not take effect for four years.
Right. And I don't think this council, with the way money is tight, is going to pay a mayor $118,000 and then turn around and pay a city manager more than that.
Yeah.
That doesn't make any sense at all.
It doesn't.
So if you're going to change the system, you got to change the system and go to a part-time manager and a full-time city administrator or manager, however that needs to be done. But again, remember, we're not, we can't change the system of government now, so whoever is elected mayor will be the day-to-day manager of the city.
Okay. Thank you. Roll call?
I'd like to comment.
Oh, yes, Alderman Tempest, sorry.
I see that the salaries are the same for the next four years.
For the...
They're frozen.
And city clerk. The Alderman set an example, I think, two years ago, or almost two years ago, when they froze their salaries for the next four years. Why do we do that? Trying to set an example of the fiscal condition that we feel we're in and trying to work out. A lot of our employees got no raises there for a while also. There's some, they're starting to get some now. But we wanted to let them know that, yes, we're trying to set the example. And I think maybe the mayor's salary now would not be as much as some department heads, but in a sense, we're sending a message, and we're saying, "Hey, we're all in this together. We're going to work our way through this." And that's why I want to support freezing the salary, and not in a negative way, but in a positive way. And I hope the clerk and yourself understand that.
Actually, I came back into the room and said, "If I had a vote, my suggestion would be that you freeze the mayor's salary."
Thank you.
And then I left. That was because, as you know, when I got, when I first came in, I gave back my raise to, and sent it to the animal control instead of taking it. I returned it back into the coffers and assisted animal control.
You recall, Alderman did that all...
That's right. They sure did. And even Pat Needham gave up his entire salary. So it is something that we take seriously, and I, you know, I'm 100% supportive of this freeze.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Call for a question.
Question is called. We don't have a motion in a second.
I, yeah.
Okay, motion by Alderman Conkin. Who was the second? Alderman Rivera, roll call, please, then.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Beadley.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Eyes have it. Thank you. Item B, Alderman Moiseo.
Item B was, is a motion to establish the salary of the city treasurer for $12,000 per year effective May 1st, 2013 through April 30th, 2017. Now, since you weren't there, Mayor, that was a two-to-two tie in the committee, to do that and to voted no.
Right.
There was a lot of discussion about the treasurer's position in labor relations, saying that a lot of municipalities have gone away from a treasurer because the CFO does a lot of the functions of a treasurer. So there was a lot of discussion of that position itself. Now, again, it's not about the person, it's about the position.
Chairman, may I speak?
Just one minute, Doc.
Please, treasurer, hold, please.
I'd like to say that Doc Schwab has done a great job as a treasurer. He's worked very diligently to get things back on track. But, again, it's not about the person, it's about the position. A lot of the work, from our understanding in the committee, is done by the staff, not necessarily treasurer. The treasurer, now, I'm not, again, this is not Dr. Schwab, but the treasurer could be elected and hardly ever come. So that was the discussion that happened with the council. It's about the position, again, not the person. Doc Schwab may not be the treasurer forever, so we have to always consider about the position. I guess we'll let Dr. Schwab talk.
Yes, if you don't mind, please. Allow Dr. Schwab. Dr. Schwab, please.
Well, as I was told by the past mayor, the past treasurer didn't come very often, and he certainly didn't oversee his office. But since I've been there, some of the things that I've done is the hard work, the many hours to get the remediation plan executed and to get the audits into compliance, saving money. Discovering a letter of credit, it wasn't brought to my desk. I discovered the letter of credit for 7.5% interest on a letter of credit, so I renegotiated that for savings of $550,000 of taxpayers' money in my first year. Office improvements. Credit cards can now be used at all the offices of City Hall. We now have electronic records in the treasurer's office. Transparency. Audits and investment policy is now on the city's website. I'd be glad to answer any questions any of the Aldermen have about the oversight of the treasurer. Obviously, as you said, if everything's working zoom and everybody is doing their proper job, finance director, all the above officers are doing their proper job, it's probably pretty simple. All I know is, when I come here, it certainly wasn't simple. It certainly wasn't in control. It took 16 months to get the office generally in control to start working on these other I believe I deserve the salary that I have been given. And I'd be glad to take any reduction by whatever percentage of any of the other officers or city council take. I'll be more than happy.
Let me...
Sir.
Thank you, Dr. Schwab. One of the things that was brought up is that, right now, the treasurer makes as much as an Alderman. It's a couple hundred dollars more. I don't know how, because we're on different, when you set the salaries, we were on, again, the mayor, the clerk, and the treasurer, we're setting, now, we set ours last year, so it's a little bit different. So the treasurer's making a little bit more than an Alderman right now. Not much. The other, since this was two-to-two, I might need an opinion from corporation council. It was tied two-to-two. Does that come out of committee when it's tied?
Comes out...
Comes out with no recommendation.
Comes out with no recommendation. So we, in fact, I mean, we could, we could make our, someone could make a recommendation now. We could go with this, or it's open on the floor for anybody to make a recommendation that would like to. Alderman May?
Mayor, if I could be recognized?
Yes, absolutely.
I'd like to make the recommendation to set the treasurer's salary at the same as the Alderman's salary and freeze it for four years, as we did with the previous two salaries. That would be my recommendation to amend the motion.
We have the motion to amend by Alderman May, Alderman Rivera.
Second.
Alderman Rivera makes the second on that. Do we have any comments or questions?
Yeah.
Alderman Tempest.
Yeah, I'd like to see it to about $1,800, $18,000 a year. Why do I say that? There's no way that the treasurer puts the amount of time that an Alderman does. No Yes, he's done some things in the office, absolutely. But the treasurer does not put the amount of time that an Alderman does. An Alderman's a full-time job. Hell, they call me at 10 o'clock, I go out the door. The treasurer has some office hours. He has a full-time assistant that does most of the work there. In fact, this council wanted to, you could eliminate the position of treasurer. You probably don't need the job anymore. You probably do not need the job anymore. So I would like to see it reduced to $18,000 a year from the present salary. I see the recommendation was 12. Here I am, compromised. I'm a compromised citizen. Yeah, so that's why I came up with that figure.
All right, thank you. Yes, Alderman Moiseo.
Real quick, my recommendation in committee was a graduated, was 20, 18, 16, 14. But somehow 12 came about. Now we have, the only motion we have to vote on is a freeze equal to an Alderman's salary. So I think that's the motion before us.
Right now, it is. Alderman Beadley has a comment he would like to make.
Chair.
Then, okay. Well, Dr. Schwab... If it makes, if it makes... Hold on, Dr. Schwab, actually, it's Alderman Beadley.
Okay, you're pointing out...
At this point...
I'm sorry.
I'm not sure from a operational standpoint, does he speak during this?
Yeah, any Alderman...
Okay, all right, good. No, technically, I was just asking. Okay, Alderman Beadley, and then we'll go back to Treasurer John Schwab.
I'm not a member of the committee, but I go, I went to the meeting, and the $12,000 came from me. I thought $1,000 a month was adequate for what the treasurer does, so I'll let my colleagues off the hook here. That came from me. Thank you.
Okay. Treasurer Schwab, please.
Would it make the Alderman of the sixth ward more comfortable if it was $22,000 and make sure it stayed under the salary of the Alderman? It's fine with me.
Okay, thank you. Now, if I could weigh in, if you guys went in mind just a little bit. You know, when we, when we first came in, we had a pretty difficult situation to deal with. We had gone three years without audits, if I remember correctly. There were operational things that might not have been based on the best standards, government accounting standard board, you know, are, these are all rules and regs that everybody should follow in this game. Because it helps to make sure that you handle your money properly, that you have the right kind of oversight over it. And I, and I have to be honest, Dr. Schwab worked very hard this first couple of years to get this office into order. He truly did. It wasn't easy. Here's my concern. I think that we're talking about such a negligible, relatively speaking, a negligible amount of money. And Alderman Tempest, please, don't get mad at me. But I, it really is, we're talking 12 to 20 to 21 in $10,000. That's probably .001% of the budget or something like that. But we want to make sure that if we keep this position for the people of Waukegan, so that they have a separate treasurer who can act when he feels something is wrong, can act on his own, can make sure that things are being done right in the face of political pressure, maybe pushing him to not do things right, that we have somebody that is capable of doing the work and is attracted to the job, the highest potential caliber of individual. I am concerned, I know, I understand your feelings. It's not that I'm being in any way contrary. I am just concerned about the fact that as long as we take, have the position, it should have a salary that is at least reasonably attractive for a three-quarter time job, maybe around that area, half-time in that range. Alderman, please don't yell at me. But I'm just trying to kind of think this out.
Your Honor?
Uh...
You're done? I'm sorry, go. I'm sorry.
Yeah, I just think that, to be honest with you, if you froze it at the same level that the Alderman make, I think that Dr. Schwab, I can't speak to what went on before Dr. Schwab took the office, because I wasn't here. But I do know Dr. Schwab works hard, and he has done the right things in the face of some, some tension. Let's put it that way. And I am concerned, looking down the line, that this position, we want to attract somebody who feels that their value is being paid for, and that they, we track people who know what they're doing in the office. That is my only concern. And I'm going to leave it at that. If I, you know, if I could, with Alderman Moiseo, and then back to Alderman Tempest.
I mean, I know it was a mess, and I know Dr. Schwab has done a wonderful job of taking... I mean, I know it was a mess, and I know Dr. Schwab has done a wonderful job of taking care of it. He's earned, as he said, he's earned the salary that he gets. My concern is that the next Treasurer may not be Dr. Schwab. Could be, couldn't be, not, I don't know, I can't forecast this into the future. I don't know. And you could literally, because of the position, not because of the person. And again, Dr. Schwab has cleaned it up tremendously, and we are grateful for him for that. But by the position, we could get somebody in there, and that person could be a do-nothing, could do absolutely nothing, and there's not a whole lot any of us can do about it. Could happen up here, too, as an Alderman, don't get me wrong. You could elect an Alderman that was a do-nothing. You could elect a Mayor that is a do-nothing. And you're going to be stuck with him for four years. So, again, that is where I'm coming from, looking at it as a position, because people, constituents, and people of Waukegan have asked about it. And that is our job up here, as painful as it is. Dr. Schwab is a friend of mine, but I have to at least put the, we had to at least ask the question and see what the Council wanted to do.
Understood. We have, Alderman Tempest, and then if we could get to the motion at hand, please.
If, if I may, on the agenda, it's at 12,000. I spoke up, I said, "Well, 18." I went halfway. I always like to compromise up here. It's been my MO, try to compromise, get everybody on the same page. I think this should have been done in executive meeting. I think we could have spoken a little more freely. However, I don't like, Mayor, when you tell me it's just a little bit of money. Because when I was a little kid, I had a piggy bank, and I put little pennies in it, and little pennies in it, and little pennies in it, and pretty soon, you know, I had some money. So, if we don't look at the little dollars we spend here, here and there and there, I'm sorry. It's not, I know you didn't mean it that way, you're trying to help him, but Lisa May, her motion's on the floor, but if her motion fail, I will bring up a motion to support 18,000 dollars.
Okay. Let's go ahead and call the question, then, if we could. Absolutely. And then what we can do is, you can make the motion to amend, if, then we'll get the second and move forward on that. So, right now, the motion before us is to freeze the salary at the equal level of the Alderman's salary. Have I got that correct?
Yes.
And we have the motion and the second.
I think, Your Honor, if she could clarify that. You're saying 22,000 for the next four years, equal to the Alderman. You see, his term doesn't stay with them.
What our current salary is.
Twenty-two thousand.
Twenty-two.
Okay. Roll call, please. At 22,000.
Alderman May?
Aye.
Alderman Velco?
Aye.
Alderman Rivera?
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham?
Aye.
Alderman Conken?
No.
Alderman Moiseo?
Aye.
Alderman Beadley? Alderman Newsom?
Aye.
Alderman Tempest?
No.
The ayes have it. The motion to amend, Item B, has been approved, and now we need to approve as amended. Unless Alderman Tempest would, no, I believe that we need to approve as amended. So, we'll take the motion, again, if we could, by Alderman Moiseo.
Yes.
Seconded by Alderman May to approve the salary of the City Treasurer at 22,000 dollars per year to be frozen effectively from May 1st, 2013, through April 30th, 2017. Roll call, please.
Alderman May?
Aye.
Alderman Velco?
Aye.
Alderman Rivera?
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham?
Aye.
Alderman Conken?
No.
Alderman Moiseo?
Aye.
Alderman Beadley?
No.
Alderman Newsom?
Aye.
Alderman Tempest?
No.
The ayes have it, thank you. And good discussion, I, but, okay. So, now we move on to, we have no old business before us, no reports and communications.
We can't do that.
Oh, I'm sorry. Under new business and recommended actions by Corporation Council, Item A, motion by Alderman Newsom, seconded by Alderman Velco, to approve the payroll dated October 3rd, 2012, in the amount of 1,294,707 dollars and 27 cents. Roll call, please.
Alderman May?
Aye.
Alderman Velco?
Aye.
Alderman Rivera?
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham?
Aye.
Alderman Conken?
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo?
Aye.
Alderman Beadley?
Aye.
Alderman Newsom?
Aye.
Alderman Tempest?
Aye.
Ayes have it, thank you. Item C, motion by Alderman Conken, seconded by Alderman Moiseo, to approve all block parties, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, thank you. Item D, approved raffle sale application for the Waukegan Association of Music Parents, motion by Alderman May, seconded by Alderman Rivera, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Item E, approved raffle sale application for the Most Blessed Trinity Academy, motion by Alderman Rivera, seconded by Alderman Cunningham, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Item F, excepted place on file, the Treasurer's report for the month of September 2012, motion by Alderman Newsom, seconded by Alderman Velco, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. That concludes our new business and recommended actions. Now, we will move on to Alderman's time, please. Madam Clerk?
Thank you. I have a couple announcements. The Waukegan Junior Bulldogs Big Ten Bantam Football Team is on a donation drive to try and raise $5,000 to send 21 kids to a Thanksgiving tournament in St. Louis. One of the, my Seventh Ward residents asked me to make the announcement. Her name is Katie Ross, and she's the team mom. I'm going to give you her phone number. It's 312-246-1578. And they're trying to raise money to pay for the kids' hotel, gas, and food. There's 21 kids on the team, and they're all from our community, and we're trying to help them get to this tournament in St. Louis. So, any help you can give is greatly appreciated. I also want to commend Julie Ahern, who spoke early here today, who's also a Seventh Ward resident. Julie's a teacher in Waukegan schools, and she's done a phenomenal job of raising thousands of dollars for her school over at Cook Magnet. She's, was behind the drive that got their greenhouse back up and running, and so many other things. I wish I had the total figure for you. But if you are someone who is on Facebook, it doesn't take, you know, take a couple of minutes a day, instead of reading stupid jokes or something, vote for some of these projects, because the money actually is real. It does come to the school. It's a really easy way to help our, our children. Make a quick announcement about leaf pickup. Leaf pickup, will, the leaf pickup program, curbside vacuuming, will take place this year, but it does not start until October 29th. There is a schedule circulating. I know you can find it on, I don't know if it's on the city website yet, but it is on some of the Facebook pages out there, or you can email me, and I'd be happy to send it to you, lisamay7@gmail.com. But, so it'll start, it'll go for approximately till Thanksgiving. They're going to make it through, they're going to try and sweep through every neighborhood twice, so just please be aware of the schedule. Rape your leaves to the curb, not into the street, that wreaks havoc on our sewers. So, please, if you can apply by those rules, I appreciate it. And then, my final comment would be regarding the discussions we had that came out of Labor Relations Committee tonight. I, I understand we're freezing salaries for four years, and I, and that's great. I know there's a lot of people in the community, and I would include myself with that group of people, who would like to see a change in our city government, and like to see a change to a city manager-type form of government. And I think in those discussions, and as we move forward in the next few years, and maybe it'll come to referendum in the next Aldermanic cycle, only time will tell, and we'll see if, you know, the community has enough power or wind behind them to, to take on this kind of a referendum. But I think at that time, it might be a good idea to also revisit, revisit something like the Treasurer's position and how we run our, our government. There's, you know, we have to do our research. I don't think by setting salaries or chopping salaries that we're really making effective change. I mean, by freezing salaries, I think that's a great thing, and we're setting precedence. But I think we really need to look at city government and how it's run, and we need to compare ourselves to comparable communities that are moving forward, and seeing how their governments work when we look at these positions. So, I know there's a lot of people in the community that contact me about this issue. I'm still interested, so let's keep the discussion going. Thank you.
Alderman Velco?
For the second year in a row, my wife and I ended up downtown Waukegan for Zombie Night. Again, not my cup of tea, but my wife wanted to go. We ended up at Greentown this year instead of Big Ed's. So, Violet, thank you very much. David Motley, thank you very much for all the hard work you did putting, putting it It was a real, real good occasion, and for those of you who just want to go down and, go down there and be with other people and everything else, and just have a good time, it was really nice. Kudos, Tom Haggerty. I've gotten 10 calls on the streets for Baroque, Cashmore, Midlane, and Minna. Thank you very much for all your hard work up there. And Ms. Sarah Griffin, thank you very much for your help. I was gone for about three or four days. I got a phone call from the GC, the general contractor at St. Mark's Church. I called him back, and he said, "Bill, don't worry about it." Sarah Griffin was on the case. She sat down with Tom Haggerty, and she got everything straightened away. So, to both of you, again, and Sarah especially, thank you very much. That's all I have.
Alderman Rivera?
Well, I, this is not anything with politics or anything like that, because I have the privilege of meeting a lot of great people in the community. But one person that I can really talk well about is Joe Schmidt. You know, I'm involved with a lot of civic organizations myself, such as the Lions Club. In the last few years, Joe and his staff and volunteers have always been there, you know, providing the help that the Lions Club needs over at the Martin Gus and Bob Abbott Steak and Egg Breakfast. So, I've dealt with Joe, you know, not only with the organization, but, you know, whatever I needed, if somebody had, needed some help, I'd always call Joe, and things got done. So, you know, it's a shame that these things happen, but at the same time, I mean, don't forget that, you know, of course, we're all concerned about public safety. So, that's number one, too, as well. We don't want to see, you know, that type of behavior, not only in front of your office, but in front of anybody's office downtown. So, I just wanted to say, Joe, keep up the good work, and you have my support in terms of what you do there, and for the rest of the community, especially with recidivism. So, it's just tremendous work that you do. And also, I wanted to remember Mr. Fred Abdullah. I'm going to tell you, Waukegan lost a great man. I mean, not only did he do all the things he did with banking and banking, but he was such a generous man. You know, he gave to a lot of charities, and I'll forever be grateful for what he's done for my charity. And again, Waukegan lost a great man. Thank you.
Alderman Cunningham?
Now, I, too, want to send sentiments to the Abdullah family, as they've been a, an example of what a Waukegan night is all about. So, our prayers and thoughts will be going with the Abdullah family. I'm pretty sure, once we get all the services, that you'll see the wall of support that's going to go out from, not only from this Council, but throughout this community. Second, I want to recognize my, my sister who's in the back. She is doing a project regarding, it, politics, something, it's a class she's in, so she called me up, she just wanted to say, "I hope you got yourself a full page or two." This is only a third of what really goes on, but thank you for being here. I'd also notice in the back, we have our elected North Shore Santerre District Representative, Ms. Beverly Young. You know, I've heard a lot of things, and I'm going to ask my colleague real quick. Let me see his paper. There was some comments made tonight about, I guess, the Fisk Organization and all, and he did such a great job. I would like to have been by him in college, taking notes, take good notes of all the pros for Fisk. I had an opportunity to observe all those individuals who were speaking, and it was ironic that you were speaking of the organization. Let me give you my history of the organization and of its leader. When Mr. Schmidt and the organization was really getting together, I was encouraged that someone is going to take up, you know, the fight for those that no one really wanted to take up the fight for. Now that this recidivism and ex-con, and ex-inmate, and ex-this, and ex-that is a popular thing to do, and I understand that. I am not a person who does not understand what that's all about. If you take a look at the First Ward, from a low-income base, typically, that's where a lot of your exes are. And that's fine. But there was a form of relationship, I want to call that. It wasn't political, it was on the mindset of helping people. I get that. But what I don't get, as a leader, and pretty sure now that he's a leader and others are leaders out there, when you don't get forewarning, you get blindsided, bamboozled, if you want to call it, the front page of the news, son, and it says sex offender, and you have no idea what it is, you have to be like, "What the heck is going on? This can't be true. Joe would have told me." I have a working relationship with Joe, the organization. I understand all the pros who were here for him tonight. God knows I have nothing but utmost respect for the faith-based community, the pastor who was here. But I say to you, sir, ma'am, when it comes to those parents who have to walk past there, and I was one of those kids, walking past, it wasn't the cone then, it was a laundromat. It wasn't Fisk, it was S and W. It was the barber shop. If my mom, or the moms in the public housing, the moms in the neighborhood around it, would have known that somebody at the cone, or at the laundromat, had this type of background, and no one said anything, they would have gotten me for walking by there. Then, it'd have got them for not telling us. I'm not asking you to not like Joe, I'm not asking you not to believe in the things that he's doing. I'm not asking you said Fisk is not here to help this community. I'm not telling you that they don't do this and do that. What I'm telling you is, as a relationship builder, I wasn't aware. Now, maybe the Mayor was, maybe the other Alderman, I don't know. But as the leader of that community, when the calls come, nobody on this list, their number's not on anybody's book. Mine is. Second, the intent, the intent of this building, from my understanding, was that it was going to help those who come back to our community, then they really couldn't make it, probably with their family members who got paroled, too. Then, this building, I don't want to say the word building, but this, this organization with rooms in it, were going to help them. I never knew there was going to be parolees come, never knew. Perfectly, if they're from Waukegan, fine. But did my police department know? Did we run these things through the police department? If the answer is yes, it is yes. Fact, this Alderman didn't know. So, when the calls come in to try to help your organization, I would love to be saying, "Yeah, I was fully aware of it, my police department knew, the Mayor knew, these are the precautions, everything that we're doing." were going to help them. I never knew there was going to be parolees. Never knew. Perfectly, if they're from Waukegan, fine. But did my police department know? Did we run these things through the police department? If the answer is yes, it is yes. Fact, this alderman didn't know. So when the calls come in to try to help your organization, I would love to be saying, "Yeah, I was fully aware of it. My police department knew, the mayor knew. These are the precautions and everything that we're doing. We alerted the Boys and Girls Club. We kind of gave some information to the various organizations that have children." Not saying it will happen, it won't happen. Fact of the matter, it might happen. That is our responsibility. And the upsetting part, I know you guys love the man. That's cool. With his relationship with you, he told you. He didn't tell me. He didn't let the mayor know, from my understanding, that these kind of things are going. I don't know. I'm only giving you what I'm hearing today in the future. I know you think you don't have to come to me. Maybe you have this deal that because you were running against my mom, that's a deal. It's not. I am for the community, the community only. If it's wrong, it's wrong. Now, you may have the support of people as an individual, but as a leader, we make decisions that other people don't want to make. That's why we're leaders. I'm not, I'm very disappointed, very disappointed. Not that the fact that the person is there, that you had, you never said anything. And let me tell you what that says as a leader, that you ain't got to say anything to me. You can say it to anyone else, but you don't have to say it to the person who's responsible. Now, I don't know about you and any other politician up here. That don't fly. So in the future, not just for Sam, for anybody, if that does happen, please inform them. I don't hate your organization. I don't dislike what you're doing. I'm encouraging them. And as, I forget the young, oh, Ms. Doxy said earlier, listen, there's going to be a whole lot of people in my lifetime that I had grown up, who watched over me, looked over me, but they have never, ever indulged in bringing me a part of that activity. For one, I had a strong mama, not mother, but a mama. She didn't play that. And what she didn't play, my aunt didn't play that. So everyone already knew what it was. It kept an kill, an even kill for everyone. I don't dislike, I have no problems with, but when we have a working relationship and you circumvent that working relationship because you think you can, maybe you don't, but that's the perception that I got. I hope in the future, I hope in the future, that we work with that as a partnership in moving our community forward. Not as, well, I don't tell Sam what to do because he don't run me. I could just let this person, that person know, we're good. It don't work like that. It just doesn't work like that. If these individuals on here knew what time it was, then it's your responsibility as a leader to let me know and others know what time it is. Now, as far as this thing about, I heard Ms. Doxy say, that the men or the people in the cone were bringing drugs to our community. Fact is, they weren't. Fact is, there was people coming utilizing that area to try to get away. Fact is, the people that go into the cone are hard-working, dedicated, retired individuals I've been knowing all my life, been knowing me all my life. And for her to mention that, but you know why she said it? Because she's not from the area. See, it's easy to talk about someone you don't know about it. But as your people living in the area, they're going to learn. That cone would be a better resource for them than ever in their whole life. So I hope this doesn't put this issue to rest, but what I hope it does, it bridges partnership, not only with Sam and Fisk, but with each and everything that we do. So as many people would say, yes, they like and encourage what you're doing, I hope they would say, yes, they encourage the partnership and the work, continued working relationship that we once had. That's all I ask. That's all I ask as a leader. Now, if you can't do that, then we really going to butt heads. But if you can, we going to work, you going to find the best working relationship you ever found in a person. So I hope that clears this matter with you and I, and let the games begin. Thank you. Take care. God bless.
Alderman Conken?
Thank you. Just a couple of things. First off, I'd like to welcome the seven new firefighters we have to the Waukegan Fire Department. I know the chief can use them, and I hope they do real well. But one of the issues we had is that in the paper and talking to a couple of people, they can't understand why none of the firefighters were from Waukegan. And what I'd like to mention, I'd like to, obviously, you know, a bunch of, many people in the public are unaware of the process involved. And just to make sure everybody knows that this fire department establishes a list every couple of years of qualified individuals to become firemen. Now, if in the course of that two years, Waukegan has no openings, that list stays dead and nobody gets hired from it. But the Civil Service Commission sets up an exam, and they set up requirements for firefighters and qualified individuals to take the test. And those requirements might include educational requirements, such as being a high school graduate, or an age requirement. But the people from Waukegan not only have to show up and take the test, they also have to finish high enough on the list. And unfortunately, in this case, we've had the top seven individuals that were available to be hired off of this list didn't come from Waukegan. Hopefully, if there are more openings, there are some qualified Waukegan individuals on that list. But that's just a brief and concise explanation of how the system works, and that's why there were no Waukegan individuals hired. It wasn't a, the fact that we didn't want to hire Waukegan people, it's just that they didn't finish up high enough on the Civil Service Commission's list. But welcome to them, firemen. I hope they do well. I'm sure they will. The other thing I wanted to mention is that earlier tonight, we had a truth and taxation hearing. It was about the tax situation we have in Waukegan and the budget we have proposed for next year. I just want to also recommend to people that there also is a truth and taxation hearing for both the school district and for the park district. And if you look at your tax bill, a large chunk of your tax bill, and mine, pretty much close to half, went to the school district. So that's something that really needs to be looked into. I think that I get a good service for the money that actually comes to the city of Waukegan. I think the city does a fine job with the services they provide. But, and I've been told by a park board member that they got all kinds of money, and so they're having a truth and taxation hearing. I'm not sure why they're raising taxes if they got all kinds of money, as I've been told. But for those interested in tax situation, I'd recommend those, especially those that came tonight, to also go to those other two. Thank you.
Alderman Moizio?
There's a couple of things. First, my condolences to the Abdullah family. He was a Waukegan man through and through, always there for Waukegan, lived here most of his life, and a true loss to Waukegan. Along with that, Alderman May mentioned about our government. And always in the political season, you hear, always hear about change. Well, you can change the faces of government all you want. That doesn't mean it changes. Sometimes you have to change the system of government to get real change. And sometimes, I don't know that people understand, but being a legislature, which is an alderman, is totally different than being a mayor who is a day-to-day CEO. The legislature, just like the Congress, in my opinion, should come from people. They're supposed to be the conscience. They're supposed to be the policymakers. They're supposed to be the people that set the tone for the government. But just like any other business, the CEO should be someone who's trained in management and knows how to manage. And in our system, again, this is not, and I've told the mayor, we talked about this in the committee meeting, there's no slam against anybody that's been a mayor here because it's the system we have and anybody can run. But we've elected a daily CEO from the masses. Would you put your money in a bank that elected CEO from the masses? Because that's what we're doing as a city. We're electing a CEO from the masses. And again, that's not a slam against the mayor, anybody else that's sat in that chair. That's a hard chair to sit in. That's a real hard chair to sit in. So if you want change, sometimes you have to change the system. It's not a, this is not a, if people perceive it as a problem. Our government's not a people problem. Our government's a systems problem. We need to tweak our system a little bit. And it's not reinventing the wheel. Other municipalities, other towns, other places govern this way. Lake County, our own county governs that way. They have a professional CEO that runs the day-to-day operation of the city. Our police chief is a professional police chief. Our fire chief is a professional fire chief. Our director of public works is a professional director of public works. Our CFO is a professional CFO. I could go on and on. What I mean by that, they've had training. They've had training on the job. They know how to do it. You get elected mayor, it's baptism by fire. And again, that's a hard seat to sit in if you don't know how to manage. So if Waukegan, in my opinion, it's only my opinion, wants to move forward, you have to change the system, not the faces in the system. You have to change the system. Thank you.
Alderman Beadley?
I disagree with my third ward colleague here. We already have a city manager form of government, and that would be our school district. You have a school board, and you have a superintendent, administrators. How well is that working for you? And look at the cost, the enormous cost of that. Most of these municipalities that have a city manager, quite often, they're paid $300, $350,000 a year. It's a lot of money. I think our mayor here does a pretty darn good job. I think he's a good representative of the people of this community. And I respect the work he does. It's why we have hired a police chief to run the police department and a city works, public works director to run the public works and a finance director. It's policy that comes from the mayor's office. I'm not an advocate of city manager. Professionalizing government? Yeah, let's get involved in even more things. Look at the disaster we faced today. It was a lot of fun in the early 2000s when it was easy to get a mortgage. Everybody was getting a mortgage. How did that work out for us today? Now, housing prices are plummeting. People are walking away from their homes. Foreclosures, still many millions to come. We need to simplify government, in my opinion. Public Works, the water plant, you know, all this economic development, we spent tens of millions of dollars in this community, not much return on our investment. As far as the art space project, I didn't look at the paperwork real close. I looked at the numbers, but I noticed there is a local contractor that's doing about two-thirds of that project. That would be Bowler Construction. Now, where they hire their workers from, I'm not sure. However, if these set-asides, so-called minority set-asides in construction work so well, you would think a city as big as the city of Chicago would be very successful at having female, minority-owned firms. Look at the scandals that they went through. It's not easy doing construction work. The logistics and the execution is often very complex. You need educated, skilled tradesmen, people that are willing to work hard, show up every day to run the office. There's an enormous responsibility with all that, and it takes a true professional. That's something that you learn. Either you're born into a company, maybe your father started it. Some people like the boss, my boss that I used to work for, he grew up in his dad's business. He wanted to start his own, and he built a company over 40 years. And it became a fairly good-sized company with 40, up to 40 carpenters he had. It's just not as easy as it looks, and I wish politicians would get out of the business of telling business how to run their business because it's just going to make things much more expensive. If you hire a contractor on the basis of a policy, what happens when it falls flat? Somebody is going to end up finishing that job. Once you pour concrete, it's very difficult to turn back. Now you're wrecking it again. I just wish we would get in a simple business here of running our community and leave it at that. And in my opinion, our economic development, we have land on the lakefront. I just assumed if it's possible, you could find a developer, have a developer be the go-to person. They could get some, their pay would be a contingency basis, what the development deals they would bring. It just, it gets too big after a while and it's too complex. Tax increment financing districts, I've mentioned that before. Type it in in your search engine. Tax increment financing district, Illinois. That's a lot of pages there, all in legalese. I got halfway through the thing and I couldn't bear it anymore. I can't imagine who even writes these things. Man. Anyway, I owe my first ward colleague an apology. I was boisterous, and I'm sorry for that. I truly apologize. Thank you, everyone. Thank you.
Alderman Newsom?
Thank you. I too would like to offer my condolences to the Fred Abdullah family. As Alderman Vivera stated, he truly was a generous man. I sat on the friends board with him for several years, and he purchased tickets to every show, numerous tickets to every show that was at the Genesee Theater. And him and his family would show up. So he's going to be greatly missed. The other item I have is the Exchange Club of the city of Waukegan is hosting their annual pancake breakfast. It's going to be held Saturday, October the 27th, at the Bonnybrook Golf Club. And it starts at 7:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. The tickets are $5, and I believe for children, it's $2. It's all-you-can-eat pancakes, sausage, orange juice, coffee, and milk. They're looking for volunteers, so if anyone wants to volunteer to cook pancakes, clean up, serve, set up, please contact me. You can email me, my name, edifnewsom, all one word, at AOL.com. For anyone that wants to do a sponsor, please let me know. There's different tiers for sponsorship. I believe the lowest one is 25, no, $50. So please contact me, and I'll give you further information regarding that. My email again is edifnewsom, all one word, at AOL.com. That's all I have.
Alderman Tempest?
I have six items, so it'll be a little while. It gave me time to think, Mayor. Number one, I guess I should start with my good friend, Fred Abdullah. So many of you spoke him today. When I went to college, a family took me in on Orchard Avenue, two houses away from the Fred Abdullah family. His mom, quite a gal. His dad was the gardener out here in the old city hall one time, took care of the flowerbeds many years ago. When Fred's dad went to the nursing home, he had a gentleman go every day to the nursing home to shave him and take care of. Fred was an outstanding cheerleader, gets the word for the city of Waukegan, always willing to give and help. And I was wondering, Your Honor, if we could have a resolution and appreciation for the life of Fred Abdullah, if we could give that and have some... I was trying to get the word I wanted, but then I said here, proclamation for the appreciation for the life of Fred Abdullah. We could word it that way, someone. I think that'd be the way to do it. Okay, that takes care of one item, Your Honor. Vacant homes. You know, either I'm going to be a poor alderman or things aren't being done, but I got a house at 517 I've given to Corporation Council. Been vacant over eight years. It was DeLuHos's house at one time. I've asked about this. It's, Mayor, it's...
Gets on their list for a town suit.
Okay, good. Okay, I gave it to Finn. Then I got another one over in Myrtle that maybe the city could knock down. It's got a hole in the roof. That house, I think it's around 544, I'm not sure, but boy, you can sure see it. The neighbors keep cutting the grass. It doesn't look so bad, but if you look in there, it's really a sin that it's been allowed to remain that way for so long. At one time, we had somebody buying a tax sale, and the guy out in California paid the money, and that suit went away. And it's something that, it's gone too long. It needs to, I'm sure Newt's going to take care of 517, and maybe Public Works eventually will be able with their new machine, they're getting knocked. It's an easy little house to knock down.
Yeah, but you got to remember the legal process.
Okay, yes, yes.
It's very expensive to get there.
Well, then, I'm afraid things are happening eventually.
Yeah.
Okay, I took care of my vacant homes. Then, two, neighborhood watch, watching out for each other. It seems the city is making pretty good progress in getting neighborhood watch groups going. To that, I commend people. But you know, there's more to than just a neighborhood watch. It's neighbor looking out for neighbor. I know in my block, my neighbor got my house key. I go on vacation, they got the key. I used to have their key. We just need to get to know our neighbors better and be good Christians and take care of each other. of each other. And I just would hope that people would be more involved. And over in Grove Avenue, as a gentleman spoke about earlier this evening, he is home and saw two kids knocking on the back door. And through paper wrote up, if that person didn't see him and didn't call it in and get involved, they could've got away, but they got caught. Yeah, we just have to look out for each other in a better way. Then the lady, Mrs. Singh, I was gonna write you a note. Mrs. Singh owns a house, it used to be Koshak's house when I was a little kid in fifth grade, right off of Green Bay Road into the recycling plant. You know, she's absolutely right. I would not want, it's not a truck route, truck after truck after truck drives in there. When we allowed that to go, and I questioned that. Wouldn't be so bad if they bought her house and made an office out of it, and the house across the street, I think, has already been sold, that would solve the problem.
Hopefully, they'll get to that point.
I hope so, because I think we have done them in justice too, by not having it done before we allowed it to happen. And by the way, the Singh family is the same family that we, history lesson, where we stabled our horses, when we had the horses in Waukegan, we stabled them at the Singh's farm out there. So I hope we can get that resolved, because her comments were well noted. Leave pickup. You know, we gotta get a little more energetic. We, "Oh, the city's gonna come pick 'em up," and this little pile there, and then the wind comes, it blows again. You know, a lot of times, before we get the big leaf fall, we could rake those up, put them in a barrel, put them in a brown bag, and let them sit at the curb, and good old BFI can, or Onyx can take them. We're not making good use of them like we should. We really aren't. It would cut down our workforce as a job a little bit, too, if more neighbors would be involved. And I would hope you'd get out there and rake your leaves and put them in a bag and help out that way. And it would help our city employees with the amount of time we spend picking them up. Recycle Center, I talked about, didn't I? Oh, then I'd be dismayed not to talk back of Sam Cunningham, Alderman Cunningham, his remarks this evening. I think they're well-taken. I think partnership, partnership is the key. I sure it is, and would like to know if I can help in some ways. And I have had meetings, I've been a lot of Oxford houses in my ward, and I've met with the group and told them what the rules were in the city for different things. And I think they felt a little better involved, too, that they met their alderman, they knew who he is, and it's a partnership. I like the word partnership. And I think if we create a better partnership, things would be a lot better. Because they, they do need help. Where do they go? I was in a college, I had no place to stay. My mom remarried and went out west. A church family took me in every year on Orchard Avenue, so I had a place to go. So these people need a place to go, but they need guidance, too, and that's something you can surely give them. You know, and that's, Your Honor, thank you for not getting mad at me tonight for voting against the, I'd like your attitude toward me. You know where I'm coming from. Your dad gave me a nickname, and you know what it was?
Scotty.
You're right. Okay, thank you.
I do know that. There's one thing I would like to add to Alderman Moizio's comments, though, about the county. One of the things is that, right now, because of the population number of Lake County, you do have the administrator, then you have the chairman of the county board that comes from the body, but it won't be long before this county's population is at 800,000. At that point, they then elect the chairman at large, as if, very much like with the mayor's position, then the administrator then moves to work in concert with that individual. And that is, that's much more based on population, as opposed to style or anything like that. But I just wanted to add that. Given that, motion by Alderman Rivera, accepted by Alderman Cunningham, to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.